City Attorney, do you want to explain before we go into closed session?
Yes, thank you. City Council will adjourn into closed session if it so moves to address items number one, Conference of Legal Counsel regarding existing litigation pursuant to Government Code Section 5495-6.9d1, which is BMC Promise Way LLC versus County of San Benito and City of Hollister; item number two, Conference of Legal Counsel regarding existing litigation pursuant to Government Code Section 5495-6.9d1, excuse me, Award Homes versus County of San Benito and City of Hollister; and number three, Conference of Labor Negotiator per Government Code Section 5495-7.6, City Manager Recruitment. That's all, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Is your motion moved to closed session? Is there a second?
Second.
Motion seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
I guess the public doesn't want to comment on it.
It's hard at 5:30, isn't it?
August 19th, 2019. Councilmember Spencer, will you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Constitution of which stands, "One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all."
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Huzindaz?
Present.
Vice Mayor Richmond?
Here.
Mayor Velasquez?
Here.
Councilmember Spencer?
Here.
Councilmember Lenore?
Present.
City Manager Avra?
Here.
City Attorney Epperson?
Here.
Chief of Police Westrick?
Here.
The agenda for the City of Hollister City Council Regular Meeting of August 19th, 2019 was posted on the bulletin board on August 14th, 2019 at 3:22 PM per Government Code Section 549 by 4.2.
Thank you very much. City Attorney, do you want to report from closed session?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The report out of closed session is that the City Council discussing closed session items one through three as agendized and direction was given to staff and negotiators. The City Council recessed from closed session at 6:10 PM.
Thank you very much. Tonight, we have one proclamation for Gavlin College. Do you want to come in? Now, I have to say, biased Gavlin College is where I went back to college, and I want to thank Gavlin College for that opportunity. Started right here at the Briggs Building. I kept looking at that building over and over again and said, "One day, I'd like to go back to college." And my then-fiancee said, "Well, then, stop talking and go back to college." So, I signed up for one class that year, I remember this, or actually, it was two, public speaking and psychology or something like that. I don't remember that one so well. But I fell in love with college again because of that building. And by the next semester, I was going full-time. And before I knew it, I was doing my master's program at the University of Hayward, and it all started because of this campus here. So, I want to thank Gavlin College for all you do there. Whereas in 1919, San Benito High School added college courses to its curriculum, thereby forming San Benito Junior College as the 11th college in the state of California. And now, therefore be it resolved that I, Mayor Ignacio Velasquez, on behalf of the City of Hollister, do hereby congratulate Gavlin College and the Gavlin Joint Community College District on the anniversary of its centennial and express our best wishes and hopes for the college's continued success. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, Mayor, Council, for this recognition. We will bring this forward and share it at our Centennial Gala on September 7th, and hopefully, you all have tickets. If you don't have tickets, I'm sorry to say, the event is sold out, oversold, as a matter of fact. And it's really wonderful that we are receiving our first proclamation that we've asked from all of the mayors who are a part of Gavlin Joint Community College District, that we're receiving the first one from your council and from your city. Because, of course, the very first origins of us, Gavlin Joint Community College District, began as San Benito Junior College here in Hollister. And so, thank you so much for this. We will take it, we will frame it, we will have it in our hallway as part of our centennial celebration. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
There's been a request to move item G3 up. We have a consultant here, and I want to have him moved up right after the consent agenda, if that's okay with the council?
Mm-hmm.
Consent says, "Okay, we'll do that right after the consent." Are there any items council would like to pull?
I'd like to pull A5 and A6, please, may I, Mr. Mayor?
A5 and A6?
Thank you.
I'd like to pull item A3 and A4. Do we have any others? Do we have any from the public?
If I may, just A2. I didn't get the name changed on the minutes, so it says it's submitted by Nova, but it was actually submitted by me. So, if you do adopt that, I'm going to change it back to actually me as the person who typed the minutes, not her. And it was just an error on the software program.
Okay. Anything from the public?
No, Mr. Mayor?
I'd like to move that we accept the consent agenda as modified, with the exception of items A3, A4, A5, and A6.
Here, there's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item A3? Since you're on the staff, you probably should.
For item A3, I need to recuse myself. I work for San Benito High School.
Are you going to handle this bill?
That would probably be me.
I guess, the question I had is, you know, I see we're talking about closing some streets for different events, and I'm wondering why the streets have to be closed for those events. I know the homeowners in that area go through quite a bit of traffic as it is with the street closures and everything else, so I'm just wondering why those streets have to be closed. Is it something that's outdoor, or what's going on exactly?
It's for student safety at night. That area, it's just the one block right there, especially for the dances, because they have the dance right there in that gym right there. So, they have to close that down just for pedestrian traffic in that one, just actually only on that one side of the street, actually.
Does this happen each year?
Yeah, for the last 16 years that I've been here, yeah.
So, all the neighbors are aware and they're okay with this? Okay, just want to ask that question. Anybody else have any other questions or comments? Is there a motion?
There's no resolution, right?
There is, yes.
I guess I just didn't see it up here.
2019, 182?
So, I move that we adopt Resolution 2019-182, approving the temporary street closure of Monterey Street from Palm Tech Drive to Nash Road for the school dances to be held on various dates during the 2019-2020 school year.
Okay, there's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. We'll move to item A4.
And have Honor come back.
Okay. I asked to pull this item. This is for the fireworks show on the 4th at the airport, correct?
That's correct.
And last year, I believe we paid for this through the airport fund?
Incorrect.
Incorrect?
That's correct.
We paid through the general fund?
That's correct.
For whatever reason, I remember this as...
Or the airshow part, but the other part...
The airport paid for the flying.
Okay. So, is all of it coming out of the general fund this year? Is that what the request is?
Yes, we've determined that the fly-in didn't work, so we're just modifying it to the music and the fireworks, which did.
So, what was the amount last year?
$65,000.
$65,000?
Total.
For the...
What was the fireworks?
Fireworks were 30.
Okay.
And then, stage was five, the band was five, and porta-pies and stuff are five.
Why can't this come out of the airport fund?
Because it's not a airport-related business.
Isn't it bringing traffic to the airport so they can see our beautiful airport?
This one won't...
All that goes with it?
Sorry, but this one won't fly.
Can't you wheel the little airplane out there and let people take pictures with that and call it a day?
I assure you, the little airplane will be out during the event.
I have a question.
Okay, Councilmember...
So, are you saying that it's $34,000 for the fireworks and the music, but there's additional costs for the stage, and is it $34,000 for everything?
No, it'll be 50 for everything. There's already 16 appropriated for...
For next year?
Yeah. So, this is an additional 34 to do the level of fireworks we did.
So, the total cost for the event will be 34 plus...
The total cost for the event should come in around 45, but in case prices go up, I wanted to have the extra five.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor Richmond?
Thank you. Hello.
Uh, approximately, what, what, do you remember approximately what we were paying for fireworks when it wasn't at the airport? When it was, uh, when we used to do it over-
Same as you paid when it was at the airport before we expanded the show, when it was about sixteen thousand, eighteen thousand dollars.
Thank you.
The amount we received from the fireworks that are sold in the community, how much is that?
That's about fourteen thousand.
About fourteen?
But you have had booths start dropping off, so it's a little less than that now.
Okay, so, we're somewhere about fifteen. I, I have to say that the show last year was excellent, and I'm sure if, uh, that is the way it's going to be put on each year, I can see that crowd getting bigger and bigger. I would say you need another exit out of that airport. I think I sat there for about forty-five minutes trying to get out of there, but the show was, was good. So, there's a question, I'm just hoping we could find a, um, different fund to help pay for it, but knowing that fifteen thousand is coming from the fireworks themselves, and I'm sure another fifteen thousand is coming from the illegal fireworks being cited out there, we can, we can make this thing work.
I have a question.
Councilmember Lenore?
Uh, what do we, uh, where are the fees comprised of when we get them from the fireworks booth? Is that, is that sales tax, or do we take part of their?
There's a, there's a license-
The business license?
Well, it's not a business license, and that's an actual permit to sell fireworks.
Okay, so, we get that. I didn't know that, all right.
Okay, any other questions? Any questions from the public?
I have no speaker cards, Mr. Mayor.
On that, we should probably check, that fee's probably not been addressed in thirty years.
So, we should relook at that before, so maybe there's additional funding there.
So, maybe we can look at that at a later date. Is there a motion?
I move that we approve Resolution twenty nineteen, one eighty-three, Resolution City, Council, City of Hollister authorizing appropriation of thirty-four thousand dollars for the Hollister Fireworks and Music Event on the Fourth of July, two thousand and twenty.
Here's a motion, is there a second?
Second. Oh, go ahead, go ahead.
Second.
Motion, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. We're going to go to item A-five?
Item A-five is a supplemental appropriation of airport funds for eighty thousand dollars to conduct repairs in four of our restrooms and to do tenant improvements for Building Nineteen. Um, we've had the floors let go in two of, two of our restroom facilities. We had to absolutely demolish one of the restroom facilities that was built in the sixties due to mold and asbestos contamination. And then, we had the plumbing, cast iron plumbing let go in yet another, uh, facility, actually, the old college hangar, uh, recently, um, that was also built probably in the seventies, um, and we had to conduct that repair. Additionally, we have preliminary negotiations complete with the county to lease out the back of Building Nineteen for a new EOS Center, Emergency Operations, um, Office, and then, uh, we're looking at a dual purpose for the front of Building Nineteen.
What I was going to ask was, uh, where are the four restrooms located? So, you told me one is in the old hangar?
One is in the old Gavlin Hangar.
Yeah.
One of us is in the Weatherly Building, and two are on the other side of the airport.
Uh, for, basically, in use all the time?
Absolutely.
They serve somebody. Okay, and the other, the rest of the money, I was going to ask the same question with, uh, thank you for your anticipated, which was, my question was, uh, where in Building Nineteen and why are we doing the improvement? So, we're doing the improvements because we have a pending lease agreement with the, uh, EOS for the county?
That's correct.
Okay. Satisfied me, thank you.
Okay, any other questions?
Uh, I was just wondering what the remaining balance of the fund was?
Currently, at the airport fund, um, I didn't check it today, but I think we're around three fifty, um, cash in the account.
Okay, I didn't see it on here, I was just wondering if we can have that on the report next time?
Sure.
Thank you.
Any other questions or speaker cards?
We have no speaker cards, Mr. Mayor?
Is there a motion?
I'll move, uh, Resolution twenty nineteen, one eighty-four, Resolution City Hollister City Council authorizing the appropriation of eighty thousand dollars for tenant improvements at the Hollister Municipal Airport as detailed in the, uh, in the report.
Here, there's a motion, is there a second?
I'd like to make a friendly amendment, that we correct the typo in the second line
there.
What's the typo, could you help me?
It's a city resolution, authorizing and appropriation.
Oh, thank you. I accept that with that friendly amendment. I'll make that motion with the, uh, with the friendly amendment.
Okay, there's a motion, and there's a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you very much. We'll move to item A-six.
Item A-six, uh, the city council put out a, uh, request for proposals for street sweeping. Um, they were due on June nineteenth. We received four responses, all four were incomplete after meeting with the city attorney. The city attorney recommends that you reject all bids and reissue it. The reissue is not included in this item because it's pending. I'm waiting for a verdict from the city attorney about, um, whether or not it's a prevailing wage job before we reissue it. So, my anticipation is to bring it to you on this, uh, September third meeting for approval to reissue that RFP.
If we reissue the RFP, is, is it the, if we reissue the RFP, do we plan to change the wording a little bit so that we make sure we don't get an incomplete?
That's correct.
Um, reply again?
That's correct.
Okay. That, that, that was essentially my question, was, was what's the strategy here? Thank you, appreciate it.
All right, any other questions? From the public, are there any questions? Is there a motion?
I make a motion that we accept Resolution number twenty nineteen, one eighty-five, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Hollister rejecting all proposals submitted on June nineteenth, two thousand and nineteen for str, street sweeping.
Here, there's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Motion carries, thank you very much. We're going to go ahead and move to item G-three?
Good evening, um, Mayor and City Council. Do we have the clicker for the presentation? Uh, good evening. Uh, to provide the City Council with a little background on this item, on, um, March ninth, nineteen, uh, ninety-eight, uh, track map two seventy-one, uh, the Gateway Center subdivision was recorded. Uh, that map subdivided, uh, that landed into ten commercial properties and created Gateway Drive. Uh, for, um, those that, uh, don't know the location, uh, for general idea of that location, the intersection of Gateway Drive and San Felipe is just south of, uh, SR twenty-five. Uh, Tiffany Ford is located on the northwest corner, uh, AMPM, um, Mini Mart's located on the southwest corner. As part of the sequel process for that subdivision, a traffic report was prepared in, on nineteen ninety-six with recommendations that the intersection of Gateway Drive and San Felipe be a signalized intersection, and as, uh, new development occurs along Gateway Drive, as part of their, uh, conditions of approval, those projects are required to contribute to a fund for a traffic signal at that intersection. Currently, there's about a hundred thousand dollars available in that fund. So, this item tonight, uh, is related to the draft, uh, San Felipe Road, uh, corridor study prepared by, uh, Rick Engineering. Uh, the purpose of this study is to evaluate the traffic operations of the corridor between SR twenty-five and, uh, Santa Ana Road, including an intersection control evaluation for potential roundabout improvement at San Felipe Road and Gateway Drive. Uh, the presentation will also discuss traffic and ass, assess issues surrounding the potential development of the properties, uh, that are within the Chapel Road area plan, as well as the potential for connection at the extension of Pacific Way and San Felipe Road within the functional area of the intersection of SR twenty-five and San Felipe Road. Uh, to provide the City Council with a more detailed discussion of these matters, Mr. Nate Stong, um, Senior Transportation Engineer of Rick Engineering, uh, will be, uh, providing a presentation to the City Council on this matter. It is the intent of the presentation, uh, to provide the City Council with a better understanding of the issues that will be discussed and provide the opportunity for the City Council to ask questions for clarification. Following the presentation, staff, uh, requests the City Council's consensus on direction the project is to proceed moving forward. If it is the direction of the City Council to postpone the project this, this time, staff would also request that the City Council's direction as to when to return to the City Council to revisit continuation of this project. And with that, I'll turn it over to Nate to begin the, um, the presentation.
Thanks, Danny. Can you hear me okay with the mic, this location?
Yes.
Uh, good evening, um, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, my name's Nate Stong, I'm with Rick Engineering, um, been working on a, uh, evaluation of this Gateway Drive and, uh, San Felipe Road intersection for almost a couple of years now. Um, first off, I was requested to give a little, um, overview on roundabouts, so I have a, uh, a presentation on, on roundabouts that I'll try to get through, you have a long agenda, uh, I can see, and, and I don't want to take up any more time as necessary, but, uh, this topic is near and dear to my heart, so I'll, I'll jump right in on, uh, on roundabouts. I'm not sure of the background, um, experience level, uh, the city has. I, I know that there's, there's one in development, Craft Road, uh, Fourth Street, so, um, definitely have a little bit of experience, but, uh, I'm going to go through a little bit about, you know, what is a roundabout and why they work and the benefits, and then some examples. So, what is a roundabout? Well, it's free from a traffic signal, it's a type of intersection control that operates on, uh, on yield, on entry, and, uh, interim traffic circulates in a counterclockwise direction, and, um, pedestrian crossings are separated from the intersection, and I'll get into that a little bit, uh, later. But in general, the geometrics, uh, dictate slower speeds, and, and those are the greatest benefits achieved at a roundabout are the reduced speeds. What is a roundabout not? And I often hear about the, uh, the Arc de Triomphe in France, or large, uh, East Coast rotaries, or traffic circles in, in neighborhoods. Um, these are circular intersections, but they're, they're not on a roundabout, they have different, uh, characteristics. Uh, for instance, a traffic circle is, you know, can have a stop on all, all approaches or uncontrolled, just, uh, a, a traffic calming device, essentially. Here's an example of a, a large rotary on the East Coast that was converted, uh, to a modern roundabout. Uh, this is a photograph taken during construction of the roundabout in the center and keeping traffic open on the outside, so they, um, from a large six-hundred-foot diameter rotary to a, uh, modern roundabout of a, uh, smaller diameter, and, uh, actually achieve greater operation, uh, through the smaller intersection and, and greater safety. The speeds are lower, uh, decision points are fewer, and, um, the, the merge characteristics are, are less freeway-like and more, uh, intersection-like and slower. Yeah, as I, as I mentioned, the, uh, the slow speeds are, um, are essentially the, the main reason why these, uh, provide the benefits that they do. With all cars traveling in the same direction, if any collision does occur, it's a, a kind of merging sideswipe, uh, very, uh, little danger to, uh, injury or, or fatal-type accident. And, uh, driver's attention is, is focused at street level, so they're, they're more engaged, uh, with their environment as they, they interact with the intersection and not focused up to a traffic signal. I'll breeze through this, there's different sizes of roundabouts, uh, we'll get into that right now. Focus on, instead on this slide, you may have seen this before, um, these show the, the conflict points on the left of a traditional four-way intersection on the right of a, of a roundabout. And what occurs is a, a major reduction in, in the conflict points, and in particular, I want to focus your attention on the, the blue in the, in the center of the four-way, those are, um, high severity crossing or head-on type conflict points, uh, left turns in front of, uh, oncoming vehicles or, or head-on. And there are sixteen of those in the traditional four-way intersection, and there are zero in the, in the roundabout, they're, uh, diverging or converging type conflicts. Here's an illustration of what those conflicts may look like. I did want to redo this graphic on the right, it has the same size, kind of Batman crash there, but it's actually a less severe, a less severe type of collision, so it should have a little smaller. In addition to the severity of collisions, um, being better in a roundabout, the, uh, the, the number of collisions are also, uh, reduced, and this is data from, uh, Federal Highway Administration on roundabouts in the U.S., significant reduction in both, um, all crashes and fatal injury. Roundabouts are efficient at moving, uh, traffic. I won't get into that too much right now. Uh, sometimes people bring up, um, I feel, I don't feel safe as a pedestrian, or how do I navigate the roundabout as a cyclist? The, uh, the numbers are, are very good with respect to pedestrian and bicy, bicycle safety, uh, on the roundabouts that have been installed in, in the U.S. and elsewhere in the world, and, um, primarily because pedestrians are crossing only one direction of traffic at a time. The approaching vehicles are forced to slow down by the geometry of the, the approach paths, and there's a refuge in the center of, of crossing for pedestrians to then reevaluate and, and focus on the next direction of, the next stream of traffic. For cyclists, uh, experienced cyclists can navigate a roundabout as a vehicle. With cars traveling at bicycle speeds, there's a less differential in speed, and it's, uh, a comfortable way for an experienced cyclist to navigate the roundabout, this photograph illustrates, uh, a cyclist that's, that's doing that, and another one on the, on the sidewalk who may not feel comfortable and is, is choosing to, uh, navigate the roundabout as a pedestrian. Roundabouts offer, um, bike ramps in advance of the intersection, typically a hundred feet, and it's an opportunity for less experienced cyclists to, uh, ride off of the street and onto the, uh, multi-use path that would certainly navigate the, uh, the outer part of the roundabout. A little bit on human factors, um, this gets back to speed, with speeds reduced at a roundabout, um, studies have shown that the, excuse me, the ability of, uh, the driver's eye to focus on certain areas is diminished at higher speeds, you can only focus on, on narrow areas, so the, the two photos in the bottom are typical roundabout speeds, and a better vantage point of potential conflicts, pedestrians and bicycles. So, similar to the earlier graphic on vehicle conflict points, this one is for pedestrian conflict points and a similar reduction, this time we have the roundabout on the left. And I do want to focus on, on the right at a signalized intersection, when you have a green phase as a pedestrian, you still face three conflict points, um, from crossing that street, from the, uh, the two vehicles turning right or left on the green, and then as you get closer to the far end, there's a vehicle that may be turning right on red, um, that, that could cross the pedestrian's path, so. All the vehicle, pedestrian conflict points in a roundabout are in front of the driver, and it's a single lane of traffic. Roundabouts are designed to accommodate large vehicles. Just leave it at that, they, they're designed to accommodate large trucks, fire trucks, buses. Opportunity for community identity, you've got a central island, you could place, um, something that means something to the community, uh, sculpture, landscaping, and it's just an opportunity for the community to self-identify and present image, particularly at a street maybe called Gateway, it's the gateway to the, the city coming in. This is a similar, um, you've got the old state highway running, uh, San Felipe Road was, was the old state highway, uh, four lanes with a center lane, large right-of-way project in, uh, the San Diego area, converted, uh, the whole corridor to, um, reduce one lane each direction and provide roundabouts at all the intersections. And these are similar, um, vehicles per day as, uh, San Felipe, about twenty thousand. And I'll get to do it a little later, but the, the corridor analysis did evaluate what this is called a road diet, where you, um, repurpose the road and eliminate some lanes and provide other benefits. And I'll, I'll talk about that a little later. So, that's a very successful project from an economic standpoint as well, the businesses along the corridor thrived, uh, with the more pedestrian-friendly environment. The businesses along the corridor thrived with the more pedestrian-friendly environment. They're very good in school zones. I'm going to skip through some of these to the benefit of time or consideration of time. When you're making a decision on investment on your road system, you want to look at the benefits versus the costs. So we have some tools to evaluate benefit costs of different improvements. And again, I'll get into that in this study later, this presentation on this study. Have some slides in here about the benefits to older drivers and ARP support of the roundabouts as an intersection control. AAA endorsed. And then if you haven't had a roundabout in your community, there can be some staunch opposition. This is a fun topic. It really divides people. And then this is an interesting slide about public attitude before almost entirely negative and after almost entirely positive. It's really striking data. So with that, I, do you have any questions at this point? I'm going to switch to this study.
We've been talking about roundabouts for quite a while now, so we're about roundabout-ed out.
Okay. I hope I provided a little more interesting info. Okay, I was asked to develop a corridor study for San Felipe Road from Santa Ana Road to the south, North Street, up to State Route 25, including the Gateway Drive intersection that we've been talking about, an intersection control evaluation there. And the draft report includes consideration of the Chapel Road development here, highlighted in green, and a extension of Pacific Way there in red to intersect San Felipe Road north of Gateway Drive. So the environmental impact report, the traffic study that was prepared for the Chapel Road development, looked at this direct west extension and a T-intersection, right-in, right-out only. And our study corridor was asked to look at that. If we have a roundabout at Gateway, does it handle all the U-turn movements needed? And what are the project-specific traffic patterns that show up on the corridor? So we use the traffic data from the Chapel Road study and plug that into our analysis. We also looked at the potential for realignment of Pacific Way to intersect San Felipe opposite Gateway Drive and make it a four-way intersection, recognizing that, you can see going through the blue shaded area there, it's a regional stormwater basin. So that may not be the best alignment, so is there more of a grid-type network? But in either case, the traffic gets from Pacific Way from the development to either Gateway or to San Felipe at Pacific Direct Extension. So we looked at either alternative in this study. Here's the main reason we're looking at it. This is the collision data up through the end of 2017. And again, we released a draft report in early 2018 for the initial intersection control evaluation prior to the inclusion of the Chapel Road specific development in the study. But a number of collisions, I just made the turn this evening, coming out of Gateway trying to turn left. It's a long delay, and you can see how there would be, you get impatient and want to make a move when there's not adequate gaps to do so. So just to illustrate where we are with an aerial photograph, on the right, the lower intersection is Gateway. And up above, you can see that the south end of the ag fields would represent where Pacific Way, the alignment would be. Our work built on prior work done by the city, including a corridor study, a conceptual report that looked at San Felipe. And that's being implemented now in the downtown, some of that road diet work south of Fourth Street. And it included road diet all the way up to Gateway and a conceptual roundabout at Gateway. So we built on that work, and like I said, the Chapel Road EIR and the SB COG RTP, looking at regional traffic patterns and projects that may affect our corridor. We took new traffic counts December last year at all the intersections. We have current data. We forecast the counts through 20 years in the future using the AMAG model, so we've got a growth rate of about 3%. And run some analysis. This is a screenshot of our roundabout analysis tool. And I apologize, this is hard to read, but it's actually impossible to read, isn't it? In the long term, so San Felipe Gateway is the second row. And there's a signalized option. The top line is existing two-way stop control. Currently, level of service E and F. It's failing now. If it were a signal, it could be level of service A, present day, but degrade to level of service D and C in the forecast year. A roundabout similarly would provide level of service A in the existing year and provide level of service A and B in the forecast year. Highlight that. You still can't read it if I highlight it, right? So the summary is that the weather Pacific Way is realigned to intersect Gateway. And that is the fourth column group over. That's, excuse me, that is the last column, long-term realignment. If it's realigned, it degrades the intersection somewhat, so you've got level of service A in the morning and D in the evening. If you extend Pacific Way due west, as it's in the EIR for Chapel Road, you've got level of service A in the morning and B, Bravo, in the PM.
Can I clarify?
Yes.
So are you saying it is maybe doable to hook up the Pacific Way extension to the roundabout at Gateway, aside from the drainage area you were talking about?
You got it right.
Is that doable?
It's showing that it would function with level of service D delta in the PM. So depending on...
When they're coming back, but not when they're leaving?
In the evening, in the morning, it's A. It's good.
Thank you.
Did I answer your question?
So it's possible to cook those up, so that Pacific Way doesn't go too north towards the intersection?
It is. It's showing in the 20 years hence, the forecast volumes in the evening, you'd have level of service D. An average of 35 seconds of delay.
As a result of Chapel Road. That's plus that subdivision, right?
It's all the development in the general plan even.
Okay.
Specifically, we included Chapel Road because it has traffic movements that we want to identify.
Okay.
Was it in your area of expertise to look at the cost factors of the options?
Yes, we looked at the signal versus a roundabout. That's part of the intersection control evaluation process.
Was that part of your report? I didn't mean to jump ahead.
It's part of the 2018 draft report that we prepared.
Can you, can you just...
And I can give you a synopsis.
Yeah, I'd appreciate if you just a general synopsis.
That estimate the signal costed around $300,000, and the roundabout $2.3, $2.4. And the benefit-cost ratio was higher for the signal. We had a benefit-cost ratio of 19, so you're cutting down on, there's a significant number of collisions, you know, currently. So there's a high benefit. So benefit-cost ratio of 19 for the signal, and it was a benefit-cost ratio of 4 for the roundabout.
And that's due to the...
The cost.
Big cost factor difference.
And a little bit, the benefits are different. What the roundabout has a little bit higher safety benefits.
Right, of course. Thank you.
One more question.
Councilmember Leonore.
I don't know if I'm skipping forward. Maybe I should let you finish, but I do want to know. We recently approved commercial property for Villa right on the corner of 25 and San Felipe. So I wondered how, what are we doing with that property in this study? Are you aware that we approved a commercial development there?
That's the...
Because they doesn't have access on 25, so it's going to have to come from San Felipe.
Would that be the dark green?
I think so, yes.
Just west of Chapel?
Yes, we went ahead and pre-zoned that for commercial. I think we proceeded with the annexation, so that's going to have to work into this San Felipe corridor.
Greetings. One of the biggest aspects of why Nate was here this evening and why we're coming to the council is that we're trying to first understand the direction that the council would like to take with this project at Gateway Drive.
Well, this is a part of that project.
It is, and but...
It's in the corridor.
But to do that, we first have to understand, do we start with the design of that intersection? Because we need to kind of understand how this intersection will impact Pacific Way if that project happens.
And we need to have the Villa piece in the conversation.
That's right.
Because this needs access and not a one-way access. It needs dual access.
That's right. And so the Villa piece is part of the master plan for the Chapel Road area. And so the master plan will be coming to the planning commission probably, Abraham, is it October? So we're trying to get out in front of how that will happen.
But you're doing this corridor study, and I wanted to make sure that they're looking at that piece of property.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Two, let me, just so we're clear on this. Two scenarios, is Pacific or Gateway. The issue Gateway, you can see it's very limited as far as future potential commercial. The other one, you have properties on the east side of San Felipe, commercial. That's really what we're talking about. How do you get people in and out of that area? Not to mention the potential residential growth in that area. On the west side, you have, again, potential commercial. So really, the bigger picture is in that strip right there. Because that is what is going to give the opportunity for commercial to be coming in, access ingress egress. So we don't plan around that. We're kind of limiting ourselves. Now the question becomes, can it be designed in a way that keeps traffic flowing? Your point, correct?
Pacific Way intersection.
Think we deal without spending $2.5 million on a roundabout and use traffic lights? What kind of congestion would it lead to? D, A, B, C. So I think that's, I mean, the reality is the commercial growth is just north of that Pacific. Both on the east and west sides of that. So that's really the conversation. If you go look at Gateway, there's a cul-de-sac there. So on the west side of that, really limited on any future growth. And if we're slowing traffic just above, it's going to help people get in and out of that area anyways. So I would think the conversation should be on this Pacific area. So we can start planning according to what potential for commercial growth is in that area. Is there any other questions? Councilmember Richmond?
Yeah, I'd like to make comment. I think this is a really good baseline. I think you did a really good baseline job on what's here. If the, there may be, I would like to see an addendum to it when I'm told, you just told me. I didn't know that, that the other commercial property is going to come forward in October. Is that what you said?
The master plan.
Yeah.
The master plan for the entire Chapel Road will be coming to the planning commission in October. Yep.
If we went ahead and started talking about doing some of this, I don't think we're going to be very far down the road in October. I mean, I just have to look at our history of doing this kind of thing, especially if we got to make a decision between $300,000. I don't know, I don't know what, I'll be honest with you, I don't know what the funding plan is for this yet. I haven't looked at it at all. Okay, so we're not going to be very far down the road between to decide whether or not we need a an intersection with lights controlled $300,000 or $2. whatever it was, a million dollars for a roundabout. I have no phobias about roundabouts, I want you to know that in advance. I would like to see, I would like to see the master plan first. I just think that's a good way to do it, and then talk about doing an addendum study once the master plan is and look at it, say, well, nothing has changed. And if nothing has changed, I have no problem with that, you know. But if we look at the master plan and then say, woo, if the master plan looks like this, then there's going to be, we need to reevaluate X, Y, or Z, and doing that is a two-step process. If they were far apart, if it was a year or two years ahead, I wouldn't say let's wait around. But we're talking about, you know, realistically, you know, we're talking about a month and a half. And for us, that's like instantaneous, okay, a month and a half. So I would prefer to accept your excellent report and basically look at it again when we get the master plan in. That would be, that would be my preference. That's not a rejection. We are not going to move on in any way today. This is basically an informational thing, so we're not voting up or down. I, I think, I think you're... I think the cost-benefit is important, but it's not always the most important thing. Sometimes the most important thing is not going to a D intersection because the taxpayers just hate it, okay? They come in home at night and they're tired, and they get stuck at an intersection where it's a D-rated. I would prefer to stay away from that. Maybe it's worth, maybe it's worth the investment to make a B coming back. So that's just my opinion. Thank you.
Hey, Councilmember Spencer.
With the developments going on all around this roundabout, would it be possible to get input from developers to see what they think? Because I'm going to tell you, I have a lot of people that don't like roundabouts. A lot of the people in this community don't want them. So if we could just get some other ideas, I'd appreciate that, besides a roundabout. Let's look at the four-way. But I do know that there's developments going around. If, I would prefer to see the developers pay for an intersection than us paying for the $2.3 million for the roundabout.
They are.
They are.
Are they making a fair share?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, that's all I have.
And some of the other options that were looked at, always stop, it wouldn't function there. Limiting access, right-in, right-out at Gateway, potential, but, you know, then you maybe made your developers more upset. I know Mary Paxton, when she was here, reached out to a number of the property owners there and had some support. So I think that's there at the immediate intersection. But the community at large can't speak to that.
So let me ask you another additional question to this. When we're talking about the D level, that is because of the residential component east of San Felipe adding to the traffic, correct?
I can't say whether it's residential or commercial out of the chapel, but it's the traffic coming out of the...
Okay, so if the area was limited to the commercial on both the east and west side of that, that would help keep those, the level of service up?
I'll bring up a slide here.
Correct?
Yes, and we looked at worst case. We just put all the traffic either on Pacific or at Gateway. But in reality, you'd probably still have a right-in, right-out at Pacific, as shown on the concept layout here up above. So there would be a split, you'd have some traffic coming down to Gateway that needs to make a left turn. You'd have other traffic coming out to go north on San Felipe and 25. So what we had was a worst case.
I think the issue really is going to be, what are we focused on, the commercial or the residential component? Because again, at that point, if you're, if traffic is flowing from the residential, new proposed projects on the east side of San Felipe, in that area, the potential 800 homes, this will become a problem. This is the D level probably, if not going to F. If this is focused on the commercial component that we're hoping to start bringing to our community, both on the west and the east side, the...
community, both on the west and the east side, the level of service would probably be B, C, during those peak hours maybe, I don't... That's, I think what we need to be looking at, is what are we trying to accomplish here at this point?
We're trying, we're trying to accomplish access for other future residential.
Well, I know, but the problem here is, being, I guess the F, the D level happens, we're so close to Highway twenty-five, and you're gonna start backing up traffic as people are coming into town because they're stuck at a light.
But, but we would sell ourselves short if we didn't understand the residential component of this impact.
Well, and this is what we're talking about.
Well, yeah, but you can't just cut it out.
Yeah. What I'm, what I'm sort of hearing here is that, um, we'd like to take a look on the east side as well as the west side of San Felipe. We can do that, and this is a kind of, um, you know, the feedback that we needed to know how to go. As we, uh, complete the, the master plan, it should be completed into the planning commission in October, we can come back in November, so, um, with, um, an addendum to this, this is a draft study, and just making that presentation so we can get your feedback, and we can take that into consideration.
Okay.
I would like to ask a que- just ask a question, I'm not trying to...
Vice Mayor Richmond?
Thank you. I, I'm, I'm not trying to, to, uh, to shore up my position, I, I just wanna know for my planning purposes, what, what, what is the, uh, what's the funding plan for this? Do, do we have one, folks?
With, with, well, if we, the Gateway option...
Yeah.
Uh, the funding purposes, and I'm just assuming part of it, um, would be CIP-based, but also, uh, for the property owners that have paid into, uh, the development of Gateway Drive, they're paying into the fee for the improvement there, so it'd be both.
Oh, okay. So you need that, that funding too?
Yeah, so, you know, that, and that's why we wanna come to you because, uh, it's gonna be expensive, and keep in mind, um, it might be another fifty years, but Pacific Way is supposed to extend east to west, and so...
Right.
It's important to start planning how that intersection will be done now in another fifty or seventy years, so...
So, so looking down the road, seriously, if we, if we make, even if we make an early decision, and we're not necessarily gonna make an early decision, but if we make an early decision, whatever decision it is, uh, when do we think we're looking at doing something actually, you know? And I understand these are long-term things, but, but when do we think, you know, uh, it's a world that is between three-hundred thousand dollars and two-point-seven million dollars, uh, besides the fact it's a roundabout or an inter- or a light, it's, it's all, that's a lot of money difference. When, when do we think we're, we're gonna be doing something?
It, it, it takes what, about eight to ten months for design, Nate? Is that about right? So eight to ten months for design, um, and then, uh, going through the, the bidding process to find contractors to build it.
You're talking about a couple of years.
So I would say a year and a half to two years.
Yeah, a couple of years. Uh, I, I'll just reinforce again, I don't want anybody to think I'm doing this because I wanna, I don't wanna shut off, uh, residential, I do wanna shut off residential, that is not in my mind at all. I just don't think it makes any sense not to wait a month and take a look at the master plan if we're gonna make that kind of investment, if we're looking two years in advance. It doesn't, doesn't make any sense to me to say, oh, we're, we're not gonna, we're not gonna look at the master plan. I just would like to see the master plan, and then if we, even if we have to get some more help from, uh, from, uh, this very, very ca- our very capable, uh, uh, folks here that are helping us, uh, see if we can integrate that and make it, make it work and find, find the right solution, um, so that we don't spend all the money and get a good result. Okay? That, that's my, that's my opinion.
Okay. Any other questions?
And that did conclude my presentation, so unless there's other questions.
I think I, I just wanna go back to something important here. We just heard this, future plans are the Pacific Way, east and west.
Yes.
That's where it's gonna be, commercial, commercial, whether the residential factor is it or not, doesn't make a difference. It's important for us to understand, that is the future plan, so we need to plan for that sooner rather than later. Gateway, as I pointed, is very limited and very tough to get around. Whatever we do there, it's gonna be a tough choice, so I think it's, look at a better or different option. Do we have any speaker cards on this?
I have no speakers, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, well, thank you for the presentation.
Thank you.
Okay.
We should be at C.
Sorry?
Now we go to little E one.
B, B or C?
E.
There's nothing for B, I'm just, where we're going back to.
Oh, okay, now we're gonna, we're gonna public input now.
Okay.
Okay, this, we're gonna do a public input, this is time for anyone in the audience to speak on any item not on the agenda within the subject matter jurisdiction of the council. Speaker cards are available in the lobby, are to be completed and given to the city clerk before speaking. When the city clerk calls your name, please come to the podium, state your name and city for the record, and speak to the city council. Each speaker will be limited to three minutes, with a maximum of thirty minutes per subject. Please note that state law prohibits the city council from discussing or taking action on any item not on the agenda. Do we have any speakers tonight?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we've received written correspondence from, um, Joseph Thompson, and my first speaker is Judy Johnson.
I'm not fixing to talk about Ralph. I'm Judy Johnson, I'm a resident of the city. I come tonight because of a incident that happened this weekend. What?
I know I'm short, Marty, that hurt.
Thank you very much.
Um...
Thank you.
I'm an active member of the church next door to you, the first mess of the, of the United Methodist Church of Hollister. Our motto is, open hearts, open minds, and open doors, and we try very, very hard to adhere to that. This, we're, we've been at that location and in this town for one-hundred-and-fifty years, and no, I was not an original member. However, I am still an active member. And this past Saturday, we had a lovely memorial service for someone most of you probably know, Jody Larson. Mr. Larson was a teacher in town, he was an activist, he was very involved with a lot of activities, and he was a music teacher like for forever, and very talented. As a result, we have in our church the only pipe organ in San Benito County, and we're very proud of that. So we, at the family's request, because he had been a member of the church, we had the memorial service there beginning at ten o'clock. I was not on the kitchen crew, that's rare, but I wasn't this time, but I arrived with my donation about nine-twenty-seven. And as I pulled up in front of the church, I saw on the left side, the, uh, garbage cans there with a number of homeless residents sitting there. They weren't causing any problem or anything like that. So I took my donation into the church, and on leaving, I looked down the street at this corner right here where the garbage cans are, and low and behold, I saw a mess that would absolutely turn your stomach. And what did I see? My pastor, my pastor, a person of the cloth cleaning up the mess. I said, I'll go home and call and see if we can get somebody to help you, so I did, cause stupidly I'd forgotten my phone, I just was in a rush to get those deviled eggs over there. Oh, they're angel eggs when I take them to church, believe me. In any event, I went home and I called the non-emergency number, was online for some good little bit of time, and then was told, we can't help you, there are no public works people on duty on the weekends. I beg you and I beseech you, this is not the first time we have had issues with trash left on our church grounds or so near the front door that we can't get in. I beg you, and we are willing to assist you if we can, come up with some sort of plan to relieve this. Thank you very much for your time, I'll look forward to working with you. Good evening.
Thank you for your input. Appreciate it.
I'm out here, but you know where I am.
Thanks.
Randy Struck, Starbuck?
Hopefully he'll say it right.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. I just came down tonight to introduce myself. My name is Randy Starbuck, I'm the CEO of A to B Consulting Group, but I'm also here tonight in the capacity as the interim director of the San Benito Economic Development Corporation. The kindness of the city clerk, you each have a copy of my business card with my contact information if you'd like to get ahold of me. Again, I just came down to introduce myself, I'm looking forward to working with the city of Hollister, uh, on the matters of economic development. I've had the pleasure to meet with your, with your city manager and your community development director, and on behalf of the EDC board again, thank you for the city's financial support, for the EDC going forward. Just to introduce myself tonight, you need to get ahold of me, you now have that contact information. So, Mr. Mayor, members of council, thank you, a pleasure to be working with you.
Thank you.
Welcome to the area.
Thank you, Randy.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. On Monday, August the twelfth, Councilman Rolando, Roland Rosendes posted on Facebook, I quote, "Honor Spencer, in my opinion, is nothing but a special interest lobbyist, newest puppies, newest puppet to sell out the public in this community. If the people of our community elect her as our next mayor, I am sorry to say, I have to, I have lost all hope in our community. Watch her, speak to her, follow her who she really is. You will see for yourself that she cannot follow a logic or critical thought unless her special interest friends are seriously texting her or telling her exactly how to vote and what to say. Not to mention her and her other two conspirators, conspirators voted to increase the amount of residential development we will have in Hollister instead of going with the staff's recommendations to show things, slow things down. She is selling out to the public, not listening to her, to, or representing of the community needs. She is in, with the people who claim to be the movers and shakers of Hollister, AKA the good old boys and gals club. Real talk, y'all. Hashtag, sorry-not-sorry, hashtag Roland for District Two, hashtag community strong." Unquote. Earlier this year, the city of Hollister spent almost four-thousand dollars to have a counselor come to speak to you and listen to you individually so that you all could learn how to relate to each other and to stop the bickering back and forth, and one of the most important things was the comments that were being placed on Facebook. Councilman Rosendes has also accused me of doing the same thing, and he's out there at the, at the top of the dais, at the dais has accused me of being a cockroach. And I, I ask now the council to bring forth on the next agenda to have Roland Rosendes censored on his social media comments. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I have no more speakers, Mr. Mayor?
Okay, thank you. We don't have any students yet, do we? That'll be your call.
It's too early.
I get a lot of homework from what I'm hearing.
Thank you.
Yeah. Okay, we'll go to item D one, city manager's report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council, I just have a couple of quick things, um, or maybe not so quick. Um, on your September third, um, uh, meeting which is gonna occur obviously the Tuesday after Labor Day, I want everybody to have a, a good last weekend of, uh, summer, but uh, you'll be looking at, um, a, a road rehabilitation program, um, which will be coming to you, and, uh, potentially the opportunity for us to do some traffic officers. I know that Dave's preparing, uh, that for, uh, Dave and Brett have been working on that for your consideration. Um, a couple of, maybe a month or so ago, the council asked me to look at, um, uh, I'll just call it an entertainment overlay zone or something, uh, or lack thereof, uh, for lack of a better term. One of the things, um, as you start to delve into these things, um, sometimes they grow, and I just wanted to make sure that I kinda understand, um, what the, I, I believe I understand what the council's, uh, concern was, is that when we're mixing our, uh, entertainment areas which are, which are absolutely, uh, uh, permitted in, in the downtown district and, and encouraged by the general plan, um, those types of things, outdoor eating, outdoor listening to music, whatever the case is, um, we understand that sometime there's a conflict with residences. Um, I know that just our neighbors to the north and some of the areas up there, Santana Row, et cetera, um, they've been going to more of a disclosure statement type of, uh, scenario. Um, I don't know if that is gonna suffice with you folks, or if you want something that's a little bit more in-depth. When I talk a little bit more in-depth about it, I would say this, is that some communities are really specific on the amount of amplified noise that occurs at eleven, twelve, one, and two o'clock. Um, some districts, um, you may look on the internet and find that they'll actually allow alcohol to, to go between property owners, uh, property to property in these districts. I don't think that's where we wanna go, I know my chief, uh, would not want or ever recommend doing that, but, um, so if I, I, if there's possibility that maybe, um, I can get with, uh, um, you folks maybe at the next meeting to sort of understand what it is really the goal is, and, and if it's really as simple as just trying to make sure that there is, the, the folks are aware that as we grow and entertainment occurs downtown, that we don't wanna have that conflict in the future, and we certainly don't want the battle between business owners and residences of a building. I, I think that's it, from, in a, in a, from a thirty-thousand-foot level, I just don't know how detailed we wanna get in that, in sort of discussion, cause it gets really involved, I'll just be honest with you. So, um, I'm letting you know that that, um, that may be coming up and, or I may have some, uh, conversations, uh, with you about that in the future. Other than that, um, you'll see a new item on the agenda, D two. Um, we had a request that when, uh, folks on, uh, staff goes to either a conference or training, um, session, that we give you a brief report either by their department head, mostly probably the department head, um, uh, so that you know what, what's going on, uh, in their lives and what training they've, uh, uh, received. So we put it down as part of D two. Um, if there is, we'll, we'll have them, we'll have them be here, if there's not, uh, we'll just move on. So I think that there actually is a couple, right? Okay, so, that's it for me.
So just a couple, actually, um, we had no conferences, um, we actually had training start actually today. It's one of the cooler things that we do at Hollister PD, um, we actually train regionally, um, at our facility for everybody else. Today's class, start actually this week is, uh, accident investigation, um, which will train regionally for, uh, many police officers all over the, all over the area will come here to train. We're doing, um, public records, uh, training in January, and we're doing defensive tactics in December, all at Hollister PD for the whole region. Um, if I have any conferences or trainings, uh, for anybody else, we'll of course report them during this time as well.
Good evening, Mayor, uh, council members. The fire department since June has gone to, uh, eleven sets of training, um, in variations of, uh, uh, driver operator, which is your, uh, fire engineer course. We've got, um, building official, construction, that was our fire marshal, uh, basic air operations to manage large-scale, um, wildland fires. Uh, we attended a, uh, what is it, a fire behavior class, uh, command simulation, um, out at the airport, uh, for, uh, that was conducted from, um, the, uh, Evergreen South Bay Regional Academy. Uh, that, that training was brought here, uh, through a simulation center. We had, uh, two fire officer courses, um, and we sent, uh, one police officer to arson training, one deputy sheriff to arson training, and our fire marshal to arson training. Our administrative staff went to a grant writing class and, uh, a women's conference in, um, June. Forecasting, we have probably about the same amount of courses, uh, and I'll report out as soon as I get completions from them. Any questions?
Yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you, Chief.
Evening, Mayor, council. We sent two employees to Seaside for two days in August for certified pool operator, um, course, it's a five-year certification, um, and it teaches them the pool chemistry for the splash pads.
Thank you. Excellent, thank you.
So, and, uh, on August eighth, we went to the Public Agency Risk Management Associates, Association's Quarterly Chapter Meeting, where we discussed for workers' comp, uh, whether to do a compromise or release of liability, discuss the, uh, current cyber scams that are going on, and, um, also like if, uh, agencies were responsible for different wildland fires.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Question?
For Billy, who made that request to add that to the agenda, or?
Uh, I think the city clerk asked me if we could do it, right? I don't remember which council member asked to have it.
It's been a conversation for a while, so I, I'm glad to hear it's happening.
I'm wondering, just for the sake of time, if we can include that like on the consent agenda so that the public can have access to the information, we can have access to it, but then we don't have to have every single department head come up here and report to us verbally?
Well, we, we, we discussed several in this, I, I will, I will take any recommendation from council. What I was trying to avoid is having department heads actually write a report and submitting it to, to on minute track so that you have it, and I thought just maybe verbal, uh, most of them are here, at least up until this point anyway, and if they're, if they need to leave, I can certainly do it on their behalf. I was just trying to make it short and sweet and simple and not necessarily make it too onerous, but I'll leave it up to the group. If the group is okay with that format, then we'll continue on, if not, we'll do a writing.
So can I ask if the, if it's consensus to have it written?
I can only give you my, my personal opinion, I'm okay. I'm perfectly okay with this, um, with this... I'm perfectly okay with this, with this format. We spend an enormous amount of time and money in training and conferences. The, the public doesn't see it. They see the results, they do not see the, the training themselves. I think it's really important for, for our taxpayers who pay the bill to know where people are going and what they're doing and why, why we're sending them there at great expense and it, and a lot of time and a lot of effort. And many times, no one's around to do their work. When they get back, those people who are not hourly employees are normally back to their desk and have to make up the time that someone else didn't do. So, I, I, I like, I like that report.
And, and let me make sure that I'm also clear is that what we're going to try to do is just do the big ones or highlight one. As you know, Fire trains every single day doing evolutions and whatnot, so we're not going to give you those types of things, and PD does as well, but when we're going out of town or we're going to specific things, then that's the stuff we'll present to you.
You know, for me personally, I want to make sure that if we're sending people out of town on a flight somewhere, longer distance, LA or anywhere, coming back with the information what they learned is very important, because when they share that information, the public understands what we're doing, what's happening, what are the plans. Tonight, Chief mentioned something very important, because I can remember recently a member of the public complaining that the police department's outdated and blah, 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 and there's nothing going on there. Well, no, it's not outdated. We're having trainings there, people coming from all over to use our facility. So, it's very important, and I do appreciate the reports, and I think it's going to be very important for those that go out of town or, again, have something important to report. Again, you know, when you go to these conferences, I say this over and over, you've learned one thing, it's pretty much paid for itself, and it's, it's amazing the savings we can have or the increased efficiencies of communities by learning what other communities are doing and doing well, so I appreciate the...
So, we're going to leave it as an oral report?
I also agree with the addition of D2.
Okay. I'm not sure whose brilliant idea that was, but whoever it was, thank you.
Thank you, city clerk. All right, we're going to go ahead and move to item E1.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council. I would like to respectfully request that item F1 be pulled and heard at the same time as far as the report goes with item E1. They are concurrent items, and I think it'd be less confusing, and then if we can, make the motion on F1 first.
We can, E1's a public hearing.
Correct. So, they...
Has to be handled differently.
E1 is a public hearing and F1 is the introduction of an ordinance, but, or the other way around, sorry.
The other way around.
E1 is the ordinance, first reading, and F1 is the public hearing, but they would both have a public hearing.
The only other way she could have done this was to have heard F1 first and then brought E1 next on September 3rd, but she has put them both on the same agenda item, but needs to move F1 before E1.
Yeah.
So, we need to have, go to, visit F1 first, which is not a public hearing, and then go to E1. Okay, so if there's a consensus from the council, we can move F1 forward.
F1 is not a public hearing?
No.
But we're going to take public comment? Or no?
Yes.
All right. I never understood that. What's the difference?
Comment on every item on the agenda.
Right, but it's not a public hearing.
But it's not noticed as a public.
Okay.
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 So, we will go ahead and move to item F1 first.
All right, and then, sorry. No worries. Thanks, Christine. So, let's see, the, the item before you tonight is the adoption of a mitigated negative declaration, which is F1, and a proposal to pre-zone 9.102 acres of land into the R3 MPZ Medium Density Performance Overlay Zoning District for future development, or for future annexation and then future development at 1.1 when it's annexed. The property is located at 1070 Buena Vista Road, as you can see on your screen. It's north of Buena Vista Road, Calaveras School, and Calaveras Park, west of Westside Boulevard, and south of Westside Road. On June 27th, 2019, the Planning Commission recommended the adoption of the mitigated negative declaration, as well as approval of the pre-zone application 2017-2 to you, the City Council. The property is located within the city's Sphere of Influence and General Plan Planning Area. The property is designated Medium Density Residential in the city's general plan, and on the screen, this is our general plan planning area, and the city limits are directly to the south of the property. That darker line is the city limit line. Pending pre-zone annexation, again, the property would be zoned Medium Density Residential Performance Overlay. The City Council authorized the initiation of pre-zone for this property on August 17th, 2015, by a unanimous vote. No development is proposed at this time, however, the R3 MPZ zoning district allows for between eight and 12 units per acre. This equates to between 72 and 109 units on these 9.1 acres. Because it's a pre-zone application, the property was evaluated in the environmental document at full buildout of 109 units. Any future entitlements would be subject to further review and approval by either the Planning Commission or the City Council. Pending the approval of the pre-zone by you, the City Council, the applicant will submit an application to the Local Agency Formation Commission, which is LAFCO, to initiate the proceedings for the annexation of the property into the city limits. And part of the application to LAFCO is an inclusion of description of the available public services and how they'll be provided to the property. The Engineers Report, which goes into more specifics, was included in your application or your agenda packet, but just briefly, there's an existing 12-inch water main in Buena Vista, which is directly beneath, directly south of the property. For sewer, there are eight, eight-inch existing lines, 300 feet to the east and 410 feet to the west, so in Buena Vista, so they're accessible to the property within a few hundred feet. And on the property now, there's an existing single-family home and a distribution center kind of warehouse, and those are served by a septic system currently, which would be abandoned with future development. The property has access to a 24-inch storm drain to the east of the property in Westside Boulevard, and again, that's approximately 300 feet to the east of the property. And the Engineers Report indicates a potential stormwater basin, which you can see on the screen. However, you recently adopted new policy in the Stormwater Management Section of Chapter 17 of the Municipal Code, which indicates that underground retention or detention will be a preferred method, so that'll be taken into consideration upon any future development proposal on the site. This line, this slide outlines the annexation process, starting with the initiation of pre-zone and ending with the LAFCO approval process. The project is currently at the first of two public hearings and readings of the ordinance before the application goes to LAFCO for the ultimate approval. And just note that the property will be subject to the Property Tax Exchange Agreement between the city and San Benito County, which expires on January 1st, 2020. As far as the mitigated negative declaration, this is the item F1. The city circulated the document for the proposed pre-zone from March 22nd, 2019 to April 22nd, 2019. We received four letters from the, from state and local agencies and 10 comments from citizens. All of the formal written responses and comments aren't required by SEQA, but we, as the City of Hollister, is policy and in the interest of full disclosure, and we also want to just cooperate with the local agencies and the public, we issue comments to every, or responses to every comment that's given to us, and those were included in your packet. But the only change that was made to the environmental document itself in response to the comments was to modify mitigation measure T2 to include a reference to Caltrans's preference for the first option. So, T2 had both an A and B alternative, and the A alternative was to have the city modify our traffic impact fee to include necessary improvements to the intersection of San Felipe, Santa Ana Road, which is also San Benito-Nor Street intersection, and then have the applicant pay a revised fee. All potentially significant impacts have been addressed, and the mitigation measures have been imposed and agreed to by the applicant and the property owner, which reduce impacts to less than significant for the annexation of the parcel into the city. And finally, staff recommends that you hold a public hearing, or potentially two public hearings, depending on what needs to be done. And then firstly, adopt a resolution, adopting a mitigated negative declaration and a mitigation monitoring reporting program for pre-zone 2017-2. This is item F1. And then secondly, read by title only, wait for reading, and introduce an ordinance amending Municipal Code Chapter 17, 24 to 50, pre-zoning of specifically described real properties to Medium Density Residential Performance Overlay Zoning District. This is item E1. And then fourthly, schedule a second reading and adoption of the ordinance for the September 3rd, 2019 City Council meeting. Are there any questions for staff?
Any questions?
Yes.
Councilmember Lenore.
So, this item, the mitigated neg dac, and even the subsequent item of the first reading of the ordinance, does not obligate this body right here to any LAFCO submittal, correct? That comes later?
So...
It's a separate vote?
It would be a separate vote. So, if the council votes to have a second hearing, we usually do that at the same time, and so there'd be a second hearing of the ordinance, an approval of LAFCO initiation proceedings, as well as approval of an annexation agreement with the property owner. And I don't know if those two are tied into one resolution, but it's three.
So, but tonight's actions, requested actions, do not include any kind of LAFCO annexation request?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor Richard.
Thank you. Councilmember Lenore asked, asked a question I was going to ask. I think in fairness, the applicant, I should state in advance that I, I'm not going to support any annexations under the current tax sharing agreement. So, I like the, I like the idea of the density, I like the overlay, especially like the overlay to make sure that it looks like that. However, I'm not going to support any annexations, not, not just for this property, but for, for any property of, of this type, any development, housing property, under the current annexation agreement. It's coming up, it expires the 1st of January, 2020.
Correct.
We're about, later on in this agenda, we're about to go into putting a committee together to deal with the county concerning renegotiation. I don't doubt in my military mind that this, that's going to take months, not days, not weeks, and so I'm not prepared to do any annexation. I want to make sure that if we adopt E1 and F1 in that order, or we're doing it F1 first, I'm sorry, and E1 in that order, that, so I'm, I would attach a statement to it saying that does not support annexation, because I'm not going to, again, I'm not going to do anything on the current annexation agreement. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions, comments?
I have another comment.
Councilman Lenore.
I, I just want to comment that it's always good to do planning, and this is a great planning tool, this mitigated neg dac. This is very necessary, and it did bring, it was a good study. I've read it more than once, because I believe I touched upon it on Planning Commission. But again, I'll, I'll clarify that we're not looking at annexation tonight. We just want to talk about the mitigated neg dac and then the, the ordinance for the pre-zone. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, Council, if I may, and that's totally right, Councilmember Lenore, tonight is just the pre-zoning and the mitigated neg dac. As you mentioned, Councilmember Lenore, there will be another item separately for a resolution that requests that the City Council approves the initiation of LAFCO proceedings, and so that will come separate. So, your, your vote tonight would not affect that. If you, if you vote on the pre-zone and mitigated neg dac itself, you, you have the potential to either approve it or not approve it. If you approve it, then the next, at the September 30th meeting, more than likely, we will bring a resolution before you that requests that you send to LAFCO for initiation of proceedings with LAFCO, and if you deny that, then staff will not be able to send it to you.
You can still do a second reading.
Hang on, hang on, one more time.
I'm sorry.
Okay. Finish with the...
You should split it out, second reading and annexation.
Right, we would still, we would do the second reading first.
Get that ordinance done.
To get the ordinance done.
Amendment to the zoning ordinance.
Correct, correct, so...
I'm sorry, Mayor.
Vice Mayor Richard.
Thank you. The reason I'm bringing it up is I, just in all fairness to, to the applicant and any other applicants that, that might be out there, I think, I think it's only fair to tell them what my position is, rather than have somebody come in and ask for something and surprise, Marty didn't vote for it next time around. Okay? I think, I think since I've made up my mind, in all fairness, I, I think it's just fair to tell them. Thank you.
Very well. You're welcome. Here's my view on this, and something I've, I've said over and over again. Until we update our general plan, until we update our tax sharing agreement, we should not be having these conversations, because all it does is takes it to the next level, and then the, somehow the vote magically happens and everybody says we have no choice any longer, and all of a sudden, another 100 houses are being built. I've seen this happen too many times. Now, I'm sure if you ask a consultant from the general plan industry, they'll tell you, hey, if you're updating general plan, go ahead and wait, rather than continuing to adopt different projects, because that general plan might change. We might want a lot of different things there, so why not do it right, instead of just keeping, going forward and approving these, these projects? That's all I've asked for, for several years. Back up, slow down, get the general plan updated, so we have a better idea of what we want as a community, make sure we have a fair tax sharing agreement, which we do not have, before we have any of these conversations, because now there's people out there that are sitting around hoping, praying they're going to get their projects approved, they're spending a lot of money to get to this point, and we're having these battles. It's looking better to put something together, so we, we hold until we get that general plan updated, so we're not in the situation, because LAFCO, if anybody doesn't know, is going to approve it. There's a majority there that's just going to say, well, if you want it done, go ahead and approve it. So, I don't think it's fair to citizens, it's not fair to the city. We need to be doing this right. Councilmember Rosendres?
Quick question, since we have Abraham at the podium. Abraham, just for clarification, first of all, I want to say thank you for providing the step, what is it, step type of action, and that, I appreciate that, it's very helpful. I think we've been asking for that, so that's, that's helpful. Number two, just to work clear, how many homes are planned for this location in total?
Thank you, Councilmember Rosendres. Yeah, at this point, it's, it's a pre-zoning for the, for the annexation. Again, it's, it's not an annexation at this point, it's just a pre-zoning. We would have to come back again for a resolution, asking you to send to LAFCO. If that fails, but the pre-zone gets approved, the ordinance gets adopted, but we can't, we wouldn't be able to send it to LAFCO. So, if you were to vote for the pre-zone, that, that's a separate, which we, we would recommend that you vote for the pre-zone. If you don't want to send it to LAFCO, then that's a different vote, we'll come back on September 3rd. But to answer your question, Councilmember Rosendres, as, as Eva mentioned, Medium Density Residential would allow eight to 12 dwelling units per, per acre, so therefore, we would not accept any development less than 72 units. It has to be 72 units at, at least, the nine multiplied by, by the eight. So, and then the maximum, we cannot, we would not be able to accept more than 109. So, it would be between 72 and 109, but that's, that's if you, if you approve that resolution on, after the second reading, to send to LAFCO, and then it has to go through that public hearing, as the mayor mentioned, and then after that, then it would have to come back again for tender map processing.
Okay, my last question is, how many other homes are potentially planned on Okay, my last question is, how many other homes are potentially planned on Buena Vista right now, roughly?
Good question. On Buena Vista right now, we have one project, that's the one development, and that's the Orchard Ranch Two, Maravella Two, that's currently under construction. And other than that, at this point, the Allen Dale subdivision that's under construction, those are the only two right now that are being, essentially that are under construction. There's no additional projects at this point that are contemplated. There is one other, next to the Maravella Two, it's about a fifteen-acre or so sites, owned by Mr. Gonzalez, that went through the pre-zone process and the sequel process, but right now is under the Williamson Act, so that they have to resolve that first. But right now, in the pipeline, there isn't any, it's just the ones under construction, Allen Dale and Maravella Two.
So Allen Dale, how many homes is that?
Allen Dale is two seventy-nine, right, two hundred and seventy-nine, and it's a mixture of small lots, and medium-sized lots, and standard lots, and also feature multifamily as well, and then Maravella Two.
I think it's one sixty-eight.
It's in the one-sixties, and about twenty-six of those are duplexes. So we have about fifteen percent or so that are going to be for future potential rental units on that.
And let's say Mr. Gonzalez potentially gets the same deal as the Woodall property, what are we looking at there, nine per acre?
Mr. Gonzalez, I think, is that R3, or?
It would also be R3.
It would also be R3, so it would be between eight to twelve units per acre as well, so...
So we're looking at another, what is that? Let me see.
Probably similar.
Twenty to...
Yeah, approximately a hundred and twenty to, yeah.
A hundred and twenty, so we've got about six hundred and seventy-six homes.
Probably similar to the Maravella Two.
Potentially coming into Buena Vista. I just wanted to get that number, because I know we've talked about it, and I want to make it public, for the public to know and to be aware of the potential impact that we're going to have in that area.
And as you mentioned, or as Councilmember Lenore and the mayor mentioned on the property tax exchange agreement, and Vice Mayor Richmond, right now, as you well mentioned, January first, it expires.
Yes.
Right now, just doing the math, if any new application came in right now, really, based on the steps that you received, that you all received, initiation of pre-zone takes about six weeks, so that's about two months, then after that, pre-zone takes another two months, and then after the pre-zoning, it comes here for two readings. So if we were to receive an application right now, it more than likely would not be able to make it before January first for this period as well. So just wanted to throw in that information. But these two applications, I mean, this application, has been in the works since 2015. It unanimously was approved at the initiation of pre-zone. That gave the applicant to go ahead to start the sequel document, and so this project, this project could potentially get to LAFCO before January first. If it is a desire of the council not to move forward with the LAFCO approval of the resolution to go to LAFCO, we at least would recommend that you adopt the pre-zoning and mitigated neg deck, and we will still bring the resolution of LAFCO, to request that you approve the resolution to send it to LAFCO. If at that point, you do not want to approve it, that's up to you, but we would at least hope that you would approve the mitigated neg deck and the pre-zone. Respectfully request that.
Thank you.
Councilmember Lenore.
Let me explain the planning stuff. You quote the general plan, yeah, it's coming up. I don't see that area changing from residential. I don't know what plan you would have there that would include, wouldn't include residential. It is what it is, it's residential. Roland, you point out the numbers.
Microphone, Carol. Your microphone, please.
Oh. Yes, Councilman Resendis is right to be concerned about the number of units along Buena Vista Road. That's why it's important to do these mitigation monitoring programs, because you want to address it earlier. Doesn't mean we're addressing annexation. This is a planning tool for residential developments. That general plan isn't going to change over there, so why not know that, understand that, look at the monitoring program, do it for every subdivision, and have a good plan? Because you're not going to, you're going to stop it, the very, maybe you'll be able to limit the amount of units, but it's still going to be a residential general plan area. So it's important to do these early. I wasn't going to bring up the annexation agreement, because it's not on the subject tonight. This is a subject for pre-zoning and adopting a mitigated negative declaration. It doesn't talk about annexation here. I hear what they're saying. I might even agree with it when the time comes for that discussion, but this is not going to change. You're going to have residential on Buena Vista. Doesn't do us any good to keep fighting that. I want to plan for it. Thank you.
Okay.
Excuse me, ma'am.
Vice Mayor Richmond.
Thank you. I was hoping to get out of here before one o'clock in the morning tonight, like we always do, but I guess I won't. I guess we'll just have this fight every time, because it appears that I've got to tell the truth every time. First of all, let me apologize for approving all these things that got approved in 2015. Oh, shucks, I wasn't here. I'm sorry. So which one of us was here? The mayor was here, and the mayor kindly said he has this fight every time. Well, I have this fight every time, too. He says he's been trying to get the general plan done for a couple of years. Well, who has been stopping him? When did I vote no on updating the general plan? Somebody needs to remind me. I believe every time it's come up, I voted yes. Perhaps the mayor would like me to personally update the general plan, or perhaps he would rather have the argument than have the update. No one stopped the mayor from updating the general plan. We've approved the update of the general plan. I guarantee you, if the request for the money to update it came in tomorrow, we would vote on it tomorrow, and I believe it would be unanimous. I can't speak for my other members, but I believe it would be unanimous. In other words, you can do whatever you want to do, if you want to do it. If all you want to do is complain about it, you don't have to do anything. You can just come in here and say, I've been trying to get it fixed for years. Okay, so shall we just not do anything and not sit around for another couple of years and complain about the general plan? Who's stopping them? How does, I don't understand, how does adopting a mitigated negative declaration ruin the general plan? We have a general plan. It is there. If it hasn't been updated, let's blame everybody who was on the council during the period needed to be updated, and who would that be? I don't know. It wasn't me. No one has ever stopped the general plan, so I, that's just, it's just silliness. It's just like silliness of counting all the houses that were approved in 2015, and saying, well, if we approve more, we'd have more. Obviously, if we approve more, we would have more, but no one is approving more. We just, didn't I just state I wasn't going to vote to annex it? I guess my microphone must have been off. He says, the mayor says, somehow it comes around and says we have to vote for it. It does not. The mayor is well aware of state law that says, if you have a tentative map, and it is approved, you cannot deny a permanent map. He knows the law, and yet he wants to blame the city council for the law. No one is approving a tentative map here. In fact, I'm going to say that next meeting, we should take the tentative map approvals back to the city council. So I think this has become nonsense, okay? If one of the members wants to add up every house that's been approved, I'll tell you what, we've got a development on the books here, that's got seven hundred something homes in it, folks. It was approved nineteen years ago. Let's go drag the people who approved it in here nineteen years ago and ask them why they did it. It's just sickening, okay? There's no other word for it. It's ridiculous. It's politics at its worst. It's politics at its worst. Don't fix anything, just come here and complain about it every damn day, okay? If the mayor wants the general plan fixed, why doesn't he do something about it? We gave him the authority, we gave him the money, we gave him the votes, and all he does is complain. Now, us voting no is not going to change the general plan. Us voting yes is not going to change the general plan. We have one already. It's the same argument every time. If you want to stay here one o'clock in the morning, I'll be happy to do it, and I'll keep arguing until you're tired and I'm tired. Thank you for your time.
Well, I have no idea how that went there, but...
You know how it went there.
Yeah, you know.
The general plan, oh, nobody will do the general plan. Oh, no.
Hang on, everyone, please. Now we drift it off in the conversation again somewhere else, as always, and that's why we're here till one o'clock in the morning.
That's right.
Yeah, well, whatever you want to call it.
Do we have any speaker cards?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. For resolution number 2019-187, a resolution of the City of Hollister City Council adopting a mitigated negative declaration and a mitigative monitoring and reporting program for pre-zone 2017-2 Woodall. I have two speakers. My first speaker is Marilyn Ferreira.
I know that I want to vote. Yes, I do. Because I've been sitting in this council meeting, too, week after week and month after month. Smart growth, that's what I hear all the time. We're going to have smart growth. This is smart growth. This is infill property. This fills the needs for people who can't afford $600,000 houses to have a place to live, our firemen, our policemen, our kids that come back here. How dare anybody say, put it off? This isn't getting the annexation, but why did you take the developer's money to do all these reports? Hundreds of thousands of dollars have been spent getting this property to what it is 2015. I have sellers sitting over there, their whole future is now in balance because of egos, and I'm tired of it. And tonight, I talked to you, Ignacio, and you told me how beautiful the school was that your son is attending as a freshman. Do you realize how much money this project is going to give to the school? It will be, wait, I have it right here. I'm very upset tonight. Forty-seven years in real estate, caring about my clients, caring about you, the politicians, reaching out to you, supporting you, writing my $99 checks, and this, you can't make a decision? The new homeowners will also pay upfront eight million, two hundred thousand, in city, county, and school district impact fees and permit fees. That's the new school your son's at now. You voted for this in 2015. Now I'm going to tell you about Mr. Bickel. I met him several years ago. I've been selling subdivisions and developments for forty-seven years. I don't think anybody in this room has the experience I have, and I know what it takes to make a good developer. And I took Mr. Bickel to a little subdivision that was done once, Holland Circle, and he said, how come no one ever recreated this? This helps our kids. I can put kids to work that have careers and earn money here. I like this project. Find me land to make it work. Bickel's land, I'm sorry, Woodall's land was the best thing that I came up with, and also Borba, you approved that, and Maple Park is underway. Mr. Bickel is hands-on. He's not like these major developers that have this one do this and this one do that. He designs every single thing. A few months ago, he came before you, when he went to annex some land, and it was a nightmare in here between the conversations because of some of our leaders. It was, I was so embarrassed. You earned your votes. You deserve to serve the developer who provides housing, and I'm ashamed that you're not going to move forward. You voted for this, Ignacio, in 2015. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Marilyn.
And I didn't stroke out like my mother did.
Hugh Bickel.
Boy, there's somebody I don't want to cross. Anyway, good evening. This property before you tonight is a classic infill, smart-growth project. The general plan and the city's sphere of influence show this property as being appropriate for annexation as a medium-density residential use. On August 27th, 2015, the mayor and the city council members voted unanimously to direct the staff to initiate the process to pre-zone and annex this property. On June 27th, 2019, the work was complete, and the Planning Commission voted unanimously to recommend the adoption of the mitigated negative declaration, the pre-zoning and annexation of this property. Let's look at some facts. The new homeowners on this project will pay in excess of $7 million in property taxes over the first ten years. In addition, the new homeowners, through the payments to the CFD number four and number five, will also pay their share of the cost to maintain the public streets, the parks, and they'll pay their share of the cost for added police and fire. The property tax and CFD tax for this one project will generate over $8 million the first ten years. The breakdown of that, by the way, is in your exhibit 11 in your package, in this issue. The new homeowners will also pay upfront eight million, two hundred thousand dollars in city, county, and school district impact and permit fees. That is over $16 million from this one project to the city, county, and school districts. That does not even count the millions of dollars in sales tax, gas tax, vehicle license fees, and other taxes these folks will pay. We will build new detached, single-family homes on this property. They will be elegant, smaller, three- and four-bedroom homes on smaller lots. They will be affordable by design to Hollister's citizens. A couple who are new teachers in Hollister, or a new firefighter, or a new police officer will be able to afford to buy one of these new homes. We are proud of the quality of our new homes we build, and we're very proud of the fact that we provide a career path for our local kids to learn a trade which pays a solid middle-class income.
Thank you very much. Sorry. Thank you.
Richard Ferreira.
Thank you, Hugh.
Since you guys brought up the annexation, I want to say a few words about it. The tax sharing agreement, forty years I've been in the business here, I've been retired, but I don't have a dog in this fight, but I want to tell you, every time something comes up, the tax sharing agreement holds everything up, and you basically, eighty percent of the county is the same people that you represent as a city. It's the same people, and you're fighting each other all the time. Now let me tell you about a little bit of what happens when you don't annex. The way this growth should be, you should build out for the city. The city should be the one building all the high-density housing, not the county. And I'll tell you what, the infrastructure's the city, all these, like this project here, the infill's right here, but where are we seeing the high-density property? Out in the county. They're down, and they might not be even doing city standards, and when you get out there, and they finally do get out there, then you've got a problem, and you're talking about it. And I'll tell you what, if you don't annex, you should be annexing all kinds of property in the city, within the city, so it could build out. When you get, when you don't annex in here, where are they going to go? You go, just like the ones out there at Southside, just like what happened Santana Road, you get this high-density out there, and the city doesn't have control. The city should be building the high-density housing... The city should be building the high-density housing, not the county. Thank you.
Thank you.
Randy Pitch, Pitcher?
Rudy, thank you.
So I really, my...
Hey, if you can just hang on, when you get, when you get onto the, when you get to the microphone, go ahead.
So my, my three minutes isn't specifically on this issue, but I know a lot of these meetings get a little bit contentious, and I just want to bring some positivity to the room a little bit here. And I know why, I mean, things are, we're talking about some real issues here in our, in our little town-turned-city overnight. There are some good things that are going on. I am, I too am concerned about the growth and how it's managed. It's very important that we, we manage it properly, because, you know, I drive on 25, I drive on 156, and I see some dangerous maneuvers, and I see, you know, some risky things going on in the roadways, and people are just getting very frustrated, and it's, 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 infrastructure is key. I have seen some really good things happen in town, though. And I'd like to commend the city council, first of all, for the park that, you know, you saw fit to, to put in next to the Continuation High School. Beautiful park, beautiful ceremony, very nice thing, you know, when people move to Hollister, I always wonder, what are they going to do when they get here? What kind of amenities does the town offer? I'm excited for the pool, and I'm excited for that park. That was very nice. Now I also like how the police policed it. I like how you guys put the fence around it so you can grow the grass, and then people can start utilizing the park immediately. Very good job there. Second, I'd like to send a shout-out to the city manager. Um, I know. Let's hear something positive about our, our city manager. Literally, it's been months, but this has been on my mind, and I've been meaning to bring this up. It was raining, must have been six, eight months ago, and I saw the city manager, I kid you not, with a yellow jacket on, with the 3M reflective, had a storm shovel, and I saw him clearing a drain. So I was like, that's, that's what I want to see out of my city manager, I want to see good leadership, but I don't, I, you know, I don't mind seeing him pick up a shovel and actually doing some work, so I was very, very happy to see that. And I came to you guys about, you know, eight months ago, and I asked, you know, what can be done about the trucks that TVT uses to get tomatoes to San Benito Foods? And I like to report that, you know, I don't like to just bring problems to the city council. I like to bring commensurate resolutions, right? I like to see some, some things happen.
We have to speak about this item, though, do you have?
Yeah.
Oh, I didn't bring, I didn't, I just wanted to say a few things.
Public input is where you wanted to get a, public input.
Yeah.
That's where you should have got a...
Right, but we have to be on this item here.
Okay, so should I just wrap it up?
You wrap it up.
Okay.
If you're done.
Cool.
But we could invite him, we could invite him back.
But you said good things.
Invite him back for September 3rd to speak at public comment.
Please, please do that.
I have no more speakers, Mr. Mayor.
Any more questions, comments? I, I do want to make a comment, and I, you know, we started hearing these things about, well, you voted for this, you voted for that, you didn't force this, you know, look, I'll say it again.
Again?
Am I against growth? No. But I realized something several years back. We're in trouble with the plans we have, and we need to improve them. Did I ask for the general plan amendment, plan to be implemented over and over and over again? That might shock some people here that I can't just snap my finger and make it happen. But I asked many, many, many a times that we deal with it. As I did with the agreement we have with our property tax sharing agreement. Once I realized the true numbers on that, I realized we have some serious problems. Now, for all you folks out there that don't realize this, on a $500,000 home, the city's portion of property tax is about $185. That's the city's portion of it. We got problems we need to address. We need to put together a better plan, that's all I've been asking for, over and over and over again. Had we done this a few years back when I was first starting to ask for this, we wouldn't be having this conversation, because we would have had a community that got together to give the input. Now my last item here, as we talk about these things, all it takes is somebody to go out there and drive Highway 25 in the morning, or in the afternoon, because I'd do it constantly. And I can tell you how it's gone from 6:30 in the morning to six, to 5:45, to 5:30, to 5:00. Now it's 4:45, and if you're not on Highway 25 by 4:45, you're in trouble. Coming home, God help you. All you need to do is ask the public that has to drive this road every single day what their thoughts are. We got a problem, and we need to start to acknowledge the problem. Not just blame, blame, blame about you didn't do something, you didn't, no, no, look, we're trying to, and that's all I've been asking. I've said it many a times, slow down, let's put the better plan together, so we can have some, the community can participate in, and we can all be together on what our final decision is. That's what it is. It's not about, oh, you did this and, ah, ha, ha. No, it's not the way it's really working. I'm sorry, no, I can't acknowledge you, thank you, Marilyn, but I cannot. Councilmember, Councilmember Resendez?
I'm talking to Mrs. Woodall. I don't want to come across like I'm completely against growth. I think that at some point in the future that we can work together. I agree with Councilmember Lenore that we do need to start planning, but right now, we are not in a position to approve any more annexations or to even head towards that plan. We shouldn't have that conversation just now. Is growth going to happen? Yes, of course, growth is going to happen, but I honestly feel from the bottom of my heart, if we were to wait off and to get all of the things in place, then we can both, the city, all three of us, actually, the city, the county, the property owners, we can all come up together. I really, truly believe that, but we need to have a great plan in place first. I also want to point out, because I know this is going to be brought up, two weeks ago, we were talking about annexing, actually building houses, or duplexes or triplex, whatever you want to call them, annexing that property over park, over something that is zoned as a park. And we were not having the discussion or any type of concern about our tax-sharing agreement at that point of time. So, if we want to talk about politics at its worst, when we lie and manipulate facts and present things to the public differently, or personally attack others, then that's politics at its worst. That's politics at its worst. And that's what I'm saying is that we should be focused on the issues up here. I walked this district, I know what the people want. I am very concerned that there is a new road opening up right there. I am very concerned that is a school that is heavily impacted, the traffic is heavily impacted, and I'm very concerned about how the commute has doubled in the last couple of years. I really think we need to address those issues, shift our focus to building more community, and focusing on our community, and hiring the quality of life rather than building houses right now at this time. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a comment.
I'd say Measure G was a great endorsement for 25.
I have a comment.
Councilor, Vice Mayor Richmond?
As a proud member of the cockroach group, thanks to Councilmember Resendez calling me a cockroach, said, said that I'm, I'm, I'm a cockroach because I run away from the light. I'm not out front. I don't know anybody with, with a stomach my size that can't be out front, I'm as out front as anybody can possibly be. When you got a waistline like mine. I don't care whether you like me or don't like me. No one ever accused me of hiding from a fight, I can tell you that. This will be the first time in my life. There's a guy who goes on Facebook and calls people he doesn't like cockroaches, says they're on the take, and then he says, "We can't work together because we don't respect each other." Well, he's right, in, in a way. Since I don't respect the council member who every time he loses an argument starts calling everybody names publicly, it's one thing to call him names privately, it's another thing to call names publicly. He's right, I don't respect somebody who does that. So, get me for that. It's ridiculous. We're not approving any homes, I didn't approve any homes. I think I, this year, I've been, since I've been on the council, I think the last time that, that I checked in was five? How many, what was the number?
Four, four new homes, so two duplexes, and we extended two maps that had been previously approved in 2016.
So we got four, four new homes, not developments, houses, two duplexes, and we extended two maps that were already in the process, right?
Correct, and just for everyone, for click, or for openness, or whatever. One was nineteen units, and one was eight units.
Right, and that was already in the process, they were extended.
Yes, they were extended.
Okay, that's exactly how many I approved in six months. Exactly, not approximately, not gee, how many houses would we have if we built 500 more here or 700 more here? That's exactly the number. For anybody who cares about facts, those are the facts. The truth of the matter is, due to lack of leadership on the city council, for, for ten years, there was a bunch of stuff approved that shouldn't have been, and we're still stuck with it. And now people are going, oh gee, if we only fixed the general plan, everything would be great. No, it wouldn't, because we're stuck with a bunch of losers, okay? Approving this stuff, we're not annexing it for reasons other than what it is. There are other reasons we can't annex, annex it at this time, and there's other reasons we're renegotiating the tax-sharing agreement. And it doesn't, it doesn't help to say it doesn't matter what I voted on 15 years ago. It does matter what you voted on, because every time I vote on something, I never get to hear the end of it if you don't like it. So it does matter what you voted on 15 years ago, because you have to stand up like a man if you make a mistake and take responsibility. You have to say, gee, I made a mistake just like everybody else, rather than saying, well, I tried to do something else, but nobody would let me. Again, I'm going to ask, since you brought it up, Mr. Mayor, who is stopping you from doing the general plan? Do you have the money to do it? Yes, you do. Do you have the okay to do it? Yes, you do. Why aren't we doing it? Maybe it's a leadership problem. That's my speech for today. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, would you entertain a motion?
At this time, it's, uh...
Yeah, so just so we're all clear, we, we had comments on item F1.
F1.
Okay.
We are on F1, and then we will go to E1, crazy enough.
We'll, we'll, we'll all get on. F1. Okay, there's no other speaker cards, correct?
I have no other speaker cards, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, is there a motion?
The planner in me moves to adopt Resolution Number 2019-187, adopting a mitigative negative declaration and a mitigation monitoring and reporting program for pre-zone 2017-2, the Woodall property.
Okay, there's motions, there's second?
Second.
Second. Oh.
Be my guest.
Thank you, sir.
Can we have a roll call vote on this, please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Resendez?
Absolutely not.
Vice Mayor Richmond?
Yes.
Mayor Velasquez?
No.
Councilmember Spencer?
Yes.
Councilmember Lenore?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries.
Motion carries by a 3-2 vote.
Thank you. And now we're going to go to a public hearing.
E1.
E1.
So I think, I think you, I think the council has the report on both items. It probably behooves you to open the public hearing on E1, close it, and then, obviously.
That's the plan.
Okay.
Okay, this time we're going to open public hearing for B1. Do we have any speaker cards?
I have no speakers, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, this time we will close public hearing on E1. Is there a...
I recommend the adoption of ordinance number 1182.
Introduction, Councilmember Lenore, this would be the introduction.
Okay, I, I, okay, I always, give me the reading for an ordinance.
It's going to be read by title-only, wave full reading, and introduce.
I recommend that we read by title-only, wave full reading, and introduce ordinance amending municipal code chapter 17.24 for pre-zoning and specifically describe real property. APN number 191205 to medium-density residential performance overlay zone.
Okay, there is a motion, is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion, second, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Resendez?
No.
Vice Mayor Richmond?
Yes.
Mayor Velasquez?
No.
Councilmember Spencer?
Yes.
Councilmember Lenore?
Aye.
And it passes by a 3-2 vote.
Okay, thank you very much. Why don't we take a five-minute break, and then we'll come back to item F2.
The air conditioner is... The air conditioner is...
With English teachers or Spanish teachers as their parents. Very few, and yet they learn language. How do they do that? The way they do that is because their brain is ready to learn, and when their brain is ready to learn, they need that information. We've got forty thousand people in the city, and we've got another twenty thousand in the rest of the county, and these people need a decent primary library. And I think you won't find college libraries and libraries for eight, ten, or twelve-year-olds together in most places, not even in the richest towns that we have. They have separate libraries. Santa Clara County, just to give you an idea of the advantage, they've got something like forty-two million dollars in their library fund, and that is only eighteen percent of what they give out to support libraries, because they have a property tax for libraries, thirty-three dollars and change per parcel. And we're gonna have to come up with a lot of money to build a library, and it's gonna be very, very difficult. And all I want in this resolution is I'm asking people to say, yes, I support the fact that we need a new library here. The fact that we need a four-year college is already established. We don't have to do that. That's already was in the last measure for Gavilan College. I'm supporting a four-year college here, but we need a primary library to get kids to college. If they don't get through high school, they're not getting to college. And if they don't get through grammar school, they're not getting through high school. So that's the way I see it. I appreciate your willingness, wanting to expand the problem, but I think it's gonna be tough enough the way it is. Thank you for your time.
Councilmember Rosales.
Thank you. I think Ms. Nora is here in the audience, and she could probably attest to that I use the library probably on a weekly, for sure on a bi-weekly basis. And I do, in fact, attend the library with my eight-year-old daughter. So I'm just gonna speak from my personal experience. I'm not gonna try to throw numbers at you. I think Ms. Nora could probably speak to that and get us some more specific detailed stats as to who's using library. But when I've gone to the library, especially in the summertime, yes, there's lots of children there. They're having a lot of success with all of the events. But I also see college students sitting at those computers. I also see adults learning to read. I also see teenagers from high school coming over there. I don't know who's gonna use the library during the day, because most eight-year-olds, like my own child, is in school full-time and in the day. I would have to say that if we are going to do something, then I think we need to think more modern, I guess, or progressive, or we wanna be inclusive in that we are going to try to incorporate all ages and the entire community to maximize the potential, not only the potential, but the use of the library. And nowadays, we are heading towards a more technology-friendly world and environment. I really would like to see that as part of this library. So if we can change the language, I'd be in full support of that. However, I don't think that's gonna happen, because again, that's just the way things have been going. Thank you.
Do we have any speaker cards?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, for item F two, resolution number twenty nineteen dash one eighty-eight, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Hollister in support of a new and expanded county-free library and resource center. I have two speaker cards. Tammy Aviles.
Good evening. My name is Tammy Aviles, and I'm with the Coalition for a New Community Library and Resource Center. I just want to express my appreciation for your consideration and support of this resolution, acknowledging the need for a new expanded library and a resource center. I refer you to our website at sbcnewlibrary.org for more information and detail about what our vision is and how it does include technology and classes, et cetera. Thank you.
Dave Wright.
Good evening. My name is Dave Wright. I live here in Hollister. And I thank you, as a council, for even considering a resolution supporting a library. I know that you all are very well-educated, and at some time in your life, I'm sure you went to a library to get some of that education. You know, since the dawn of time, man has been recording their history in the caves, in the Pyrenees, in France, Petroglyphs in Arizona. We all have this desire to preserve our history and our knowledge. And that is sometimes a very, very important thing in all our societies. It's a dangerous thing. We have to protect it. Look what happened in Nazi Germany when they burned books. They believed that education and books were so powerful that they had to destroy them. So I know, basically, you are all in favor of education. Our vision of a library, I'm on the coalition with Tammy, has been talking about technical, just things like a heirloom seed library, public services, a kiosk for finding out where to go for a building permit or a health permit. Those kinds of things incorporate the whole community. It's more than just going in as a learning center, it's also an information center. Currently, the library is doing work, providing passports for people. That's a great service in this town. A little, for my history, my mother's family came to the Virginia colonies in the sixteen hundreds, and there's a great number of those relatives left on the East Coast. Our family had a little book with the history of the family written in the nineteen thirties, and I tried to get a copy. I called the publisher. They were out of print. They suggested I call the library in Parsons, Virginia. I called them. They didn't have an extra book to sell. But the lady at the desk says, "I'll copy it for you." And for twenty-five dollars, she sent me this history of books, a couple hundred pages. I've copied that and sent it out to my children and to my grandchildren. A library is an important part of our society. It adds to the standard of living that we have. It adds to the diversification of peoples. It also promotes innovation. It inspires young people to be curious, and it's something that we need. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I have no more speakers, Mr. Mayor.
So just, again, I wanted to go back. Of course, we... Yeah, go ahead. You can fill that out as you finish.
So it's been twenty years since I graduated from San Bernardino High School. I took a lot of advanced placement honors and accelerated courses. And I can attest to the fact that when you get into high school, you know, the resources you have at SBHS and the surrounding schools, for these types of classes, it's just not substantial enough. You know, I had to go to Gavilan Community College, you know, the Gilroy Public Library, in order to find the resources necessary to, you know, complete complex thoughts and have the work cited necessary to write the papers that I needed for those classes. So it looks to me like all we're doing here is just, you know, committing our support for such a project. And I definitely think it's completely, I think we're all just about on the same page with this. I love the fire and enthusiasm I hear out of Marty specifically. I'm a little bit more with Roland on this one in a sense that I understand where Marty's coming from when it comes to, you know, younger kids need different resources, and his vision for this is very specific. You know, being sort of still a younger person and still remembering, you know, being a youth, I always felt it was an advantage being with learners of all ages. So if you can get people of all ages, you know, in the same place at the same time, I think that there can be potentially a space for the younger learners to get what they need, and also some of the advanced learners to get what they need. And I also think it could be a really cool thing for the community to have a place where everybody can gather, and knowledge be the core reason to gather in that specific place. And the younger learners kind of learn from the older ones in sort of a mentor-type atmosphere. So I definitely am completely for this. I think this is a phenomenal thing for Hollister, and this is exactly what I'm talking about. When I started coming to these meetings all those months back, like, you know, we have all this growth. People wanna move here. This is a beautiful place for people to live. But again, my concern is always, what are people going to find once they get here, right? Are we gonna have the amenities that people need to have a high quality of life? And I like this kind of thing, 'cause it's definitely quality-of-life centered. So I think that this is a very positive thing.
Thank you. Thank you.
I have one more speaker, and Rudy, you don't need to fill out a card. I've got you. Nora Conti.
Good evening, members of the City Council. I'm pleased to meet some of you that I had not met before, those of you that have come into my library and also have participated in programs and have helped me provide programs for the community. I appreciate certainly your support. I would appreciate your support of this resolution. As we continue to go forward, this is about planning together for the future for all of us. This is not about some of us. This is about all of us. That's the way a library responds to the needs of its communities. There no big guys and little u's. We all work together. We plan together. A vision that is a shared vision, so that we can be responsible and responsive to the needs of our community. So beforehand, I wanna thank you, and I'm hoping for your unification and unity as we move forward together in the preparation for a library for our entire community. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have no more speaker cards, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Just wanted to, did you have something? Go ahead, Carol.
That was beautifully said, Nora. That was beautifully said, Nora. The library has been tried and true. This library's been around for a long time. It's served many people in this community, not just kids. I think they've earned the recognition that this resolution will give them. I want to remind people that the county had some hard times, and the city had hard times, and who stepped up? Friends of the library. Friends of the library, big time. That library wouldn't even be open if it wasn't for the friends of the library, past and present. So I have a lot of respect for that. I also respect the county for the funding that they give the library. It's nine-hundred-and-something thousand a year out of their budget. I had no idea they were paying that much. You know, I probably, I do wanna have a discussion here with council on the city's annual contribution to the library, which is not good. But we could talk about that later. But, you know, we did just adopt a brand-new mitigation fee for the library. So I'd like to see that program get going, and you receive the funds. I know it goes to the general fund of the county, but it seems like they wanna fund you, or they wouldn't be spending that much money. You've done the job. I have confidence you'll continue to do a great job. I do wanna see a library for everybody. Definitely, you have the need. It's so small in there. I went Thursday, and it's just really small. I guess when I was little, it looked bigger. It looks really small now. I didn't remember it being that small. But I think you can work it out. I think the county is gonna be receptive to helping you with the logistics. At least, that's what I'm hoping. So I do wanna give you my thanks. Oh, boy, put me on a...
I'm sorry.
Well, sometimes I need that.
Look at that, look at that.
I just wanna publicly state that I am supportive of this resolution.
Well, thank you. So I just, again, wanted to point out, when we first started having these conversations, actually, I think it was three years ago, three, four years ago, a study was done on this and what the needs were for the community. And the study did come back showing the need for a center, a place where the community can go not only to a library, but get tutoring, a community center. And that's how these conversations came alive. The idea was, again, a location for higher learning. Put that library in there, tutoring rooms in there, gaming rooms, community center, bring our kids, all ages, not just eight-year-olds. I think if a building's gonna succeed, it needs to be based on our children from four, three, on up to us big kids in the fifties, sixties, seventies, and eighties. And that's, we have the opportunity, when we have a university that is willing to provide classes in our community and tutoring rooms where we can have the older students help teach the younger ones, then we have a community. We have something that's gonna work, and the community's gonna buy into. So what I'd like to do, I'd like to make a motion, and I'd like to...
I have one more speaker, if I may, on this item.
Okay, one more came up.
Yes.
Thank you, Mayor Velazquez and council. I just wanted to share as an individual, obviously, on these conversations. It's funny, 'cause I was actually getting ready for bed, and as I was hearing the dialogue, I thought, no, I need to show up and at least clarify on the individual piece of the conversation that we had. We were very, you know, I, as a board supervisor, District Three representative, I basically spoke on this topic, and my biggest focus on the conversation was an honest and open dialogue with the public about what this means. And I appreciate Councilman Richmond mentioning that he supports just the library. You know, that's what he wants, is just the library. And I just wanted to include, I think, to a certain extent, it should include the reality of the cost. Forty million dollars is no chump change. And if you're thinking about supporting this, I'd like to see if it's possible for us to work together on supporting the library, not just with the resolution, but with money. You know, if that's what the council really hopes to do, is to move this forward. But the other element of it is, with what, the history that I have with it, I've gone with the mayor and the city manager. Actually, this last time we went, we included our CAO. We had Dulce, which is one of the admins for the county. We toured CSU MB. We had long conversations, and they're very interested in something a little bit more dynamic than what I'm hearing on the dialogue. So, and I appreciate we just, we had to sit down with Nora, the CAO, and I, and Erin about these things, and ultimately about the feasibility study. So this is what we're talking about, and, you know, again, having a whole intent to have an honest dialogue with the public. If we're gonna talk about four-hundred million dollars, or forty million dollars, I'm sorry, it's gotta come from somewhere. And ultimately, that's why I wanted to be upfront about it and say, if we're talking about bonding this, the public should know, you know, that's another property tax. And if we're gonna do this, then there should be a conversation about how to make it to where it pays for itself. And that was the excitement that we had. It was a really good conversation with Nora. And we were, you know, I was very clear that I wanna support moving forward with something, with the library included in it, but something a little bit more dynamic, and definitely a lot more versatile, in the sense that it can create different revenue streams. And we talked about those revenue streams. The university-level education definitely became an exciting component. Telecommuting opportunities, conference room, like, it would be, you know, to a certain extent, it would be a lot bigger and grander, which would take more time and work, but it definitely would have a lot more ability to fund itself. And having an educational component like in CSU MB, one of the things that we saw there, and I know I have ten seconds left, was all the different layers of technology, nanotechnology, software development. So it's a lot more that we're talking about. And the last statement I wanted to make, if you allow me, Mayor, we want this to be successful. And if we want it to be successful long-term, success needs to be a measurement of its funding, it's able to pay for itself. It's sustainable. Otherwise, what we're really talking about is the county paying for this whole thing and ongoing expenditures and basically staffing it, 'cause you're gonna have to increase staffing, and that's a lot of risk.
Well, thank you very much. So that's...
I'd like to make a comment. First of all, if you read my resolution, it's not just a library, it's a library and resource center. That would include a lot of things. We talked about homework rooms. It would include meeting rooms. It would include stages. It would include all kinds of things. When I say I don't want it focused on the university as, I mean that. I mean, this is a library for the whole community. It's not just a university. Here's the problem, and I'm gonna be very honest. This library was built in the sixties. We're sitting here now, it is sixty years later, fifty-five years later. And now we're saying, and this is not political, now we're saying, well, we started talking about this three years ago. Well, so another three years went by. Seven hundred kids a year graduated from San Bernardino High School. They didn't have access to it. All these kids moved up through the House of School Districts and other school districts, and many of them didn't have good access to a really good center. And now we're gonna, we're gonna talk about doing a Taj Mahal. That might take another twenty years for us to even decide on how we're gonna fund it. I would like to do something that's possible. The reason I wanna keep this small, and not tiny, but small, is I wanna keep it doable, okay? You just heard a member of the Board of Supervisors talk about, well, how are we gonna fund it? Who's gonna pay for it, whatever? The more bells and whistles we put on this, the worse the argument's gonna be about who's gonna fund it. We don't need conversations at this point in time about what color the linoleum should be. You do that after you decide that you're gonna build something and you're going to fund something. You don't need to get those all in here. Now, the mayor's been pushing his tel center. If he wants to go off and build a tel center somewhere, I'm all for it. But we should not be waiting till we can fund something that costs eighty or a hundred and twenty million dollars and do it nothing in between. All we're gonna do here is sit around, talk, and say, well, we wanna build something, but it's gotta be this, and it's gotta be that. And we're gonna spend another five years, and that'll be another three thousand kids gone through high school, three thousand kids gone through our grammar schools. And the time just goes away, folks. The time just goes away. And they don't get the advantage. Meanwhile, the kids in Santa Clara County, when it comes to who does better on the SAT test, they beat the hell out of us, okay? And it's all because we don't have the facility. We need a facility. We don't need grand plans. What we need is a facility. It needs to be adequate, and we can build it from there. We don't have to have the Taj Mahal at the end. That's my opinion. I think we ought to just support a plain old library. That's what, that was what was voted in at the Board of Supervisors, this exact resolution, word for word. And so if we wanna get on board with the Board of Supervisors, that's what we wanna do. Of course, we could vote in something else, and then we'll spend another five years arguing with the Board of Supervisors about what we should have here. The truth of the matter is, as it sits now, it's a county library. It may change, but it is a county library. And we give them fifteen thousand dollars a year. It's all we give them, about thirty cents a person, to run that library. And we're gonna sit here and tell them what they ought to do for us. I think what we ought to do is say, we'll support the library, and then leave it to the people in the group who have been doing the work every day to decide how they wanna approach the voters and ask them for the money. After all, it will be a voter's decision. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. So, again, I was in these conversations early on. Nobody's talking about a hundred-million-dollar Taj Mahal. And the interesting part about this whole conversation is when we did the study earlier, it recommended all these different ideas. And I'll tell you why it didn't go anywhere. Because somebody left that room and ran out the door and said, "We're gonna build a fifty-million-dollar library." And it was DOA. The minute they said it, it was done, and nothing happened from that point. Look, if CSU MB can build a fifty-million-dollar building that has thirty classrooms, a conference room, theater room, filming rooms, on and on and on, we could do something great here. I'm not saying what that is yet. All I'm saying, let's make sure the public is excited about a big idea, a big way to do these things. And of course, it includes a new library. That is a critical component of our community. We all know that. But making sure our kids get the higher level of education, have tutoring rooms, a community center, a place to go to after school, so all our kids have a place to go and they're excited about learning, that's what I'm talking about. So as I mentioned before, I'll make a motion on this item for support. And I'd like to make sure we can, see if we can change that title and just add "A Center for Higher Learning, Library, Community Center", something that the public can get excited about, and hopefully we can have success. That's my motion. Is there a second?
Second.
If there's a motion, second. All in favor?
Aye.
I'm sorry, was it no?
No.
No.
Motion does not carry? Okay, is there another motion?
I'll make a motion, resolution twenty nineteen one eighty-eight, resolution, City Council, City Hollister, in support of a new and expanded county-free library and a resource center, as specified in the resolution.
Okay, there's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
No. Thank you. Okay, we're gonna move on to item F three.
Hey, Mr. Mayor, this is just a quick resolution dissolving the campaign reform ad hoc committee. You've had some discussion about it at your last meeting. And I'm not sure if anybody got anywhere, but I think the consensus was a little bit is that we weren't necessarily gonna go out and try to establish our own rules as it related to the campaign finance. So with that, I'll leave it at that. With that, I'll leave it at that.
I guess I, what do you say? Mayor creates ad hoc committee. Councilmembers say, "We don't like your ad hoc committee. We wanna void the ad hoc committee." Look, you know, we all know campaign finance is an issue, and something needs to happen. Of course, there might be a person that says, "Well, this and that," or the next person, "I don't like this." Campaign finance reform needs to happen. It is insane that special interest groups can go write a five-thousand-dollar check to people that support them. It's just wrong. I think the public's fed up with it. I just, I can't believe we're in this situation. We don't wanna have an opportunity to even discuss it because, hey, the mayor wants it, so we wanna get rid of it. You know, ad hoc committees are formed by the mayor. That's why the citizens elect the mayor. What little, little piece the mayor has in this community, and now it's tossed out. I'm just, I'm surprised by it, but...
Can I say something?
Go ahead.
Okay. I was excited about being on this ad hoc committee. You did it in January. It is now eight months later, and we never met. And if this campaign refinance was so important to you, we would've been meeting a lot sooner than it coming up on our agenda last meeting. And, I mean, even Councilman Rosales didn't even know that there was an ad hoc committee. Well, I'm trying to say is, we had an ad hoc. It was you, it was me. You never met, so I'm all for this.
So you were...
Get rid of the ad hoc committee, because...
FPPC, that's why.
We have FPPC. I'm not gonna go through this again. We discussed this, the whole nine yards. I'm not going to put it into the city's hands, where it's gonna cost this city two to three-hundred thousand dollars a year to do this. I've done the numbers. Don't sit there and look and shake your head, and you don't know what I'm talking about. It's gonna cost money. Where's the money gonna come from? You gonna take it from the police? You gonna take it from fire? 'Cause we'll have to lose jobs to cover that.
Okay. I just wanna be clear. You're excited about the committee, but you wanna kill the committee. Just wanna make sure.
We never met!
I just wanna make sure. You're excited about the committee, but you wanna eliminate the committee, 'cause you don't wanna set a date with me to...
Oh, my God! It's been in effect for, no, 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 no. You're switching, you are playing a bait-and-switch game right now.
I have the floor. I have the floor. I have the floor. I have the floor. You said a moment ago you were excited about this committee, and then you're saying you wanna counsel this committee. Now, if you're excited about this committee, you and I can set a date today and meet about this committee, if you're still excited.
Give me...
But it sounds to me like you're not excited about it, so I just wanna be clear.
No, I want everybody to understand, you set up this committee eight months ago, just like you set up a committee with me and Carol. We've already done our stuff. Did it, got going. If this was so important to you, Mayor, you would've been calling me immediately, let's get this going, let's get this going, let's get this going. But now, now that it's been brought up, now you wanna meet.
Okay.
What I'm just saying is...
So, you're not excited about it any longer? Okay.
That's right.
Yeah, I'm not excited.
Councilmember Rosendez?
I just wanna clarify this. This committee, first of all, is not going to move forward with, it's not saying we're moving forward with campaign finance reform, it's not saying anything, or the numbers, or anything. This is the forum in which you take the research that you have done to the committee that you have been appointed to, and we're excited about, and explore those different options. I don't see how else we can go against it. We are not even, you're not even entertaining a conversation. You, I'm saying you, in general terms, because the majority of the council wants to dissolve this committee, they made it very clear. And I think that if you're so excited about this committee, at least give the committee the opportunity, right now and today, commit to something that you committed to, and put the research out there, come back and report to us, and then give us an opportunity to vote whether we want to have the campaign reform finance ordinance. We've gone over the reasons why this is so important, not only here on a local level, on a na, you know, on a state level, on a federal level, I'm not gonna beat the dead horse. Alls we're voting on here today is to dissolve the Campaign Finance Reform Committee. That's it. I think that this is a huge mistake on our part, and we should at least give it the opportunity to explore the option, and then come back and let us make a decision on it. Thank you.
I'd like some input, thank you.
Councilmember Lenore?
Oh, sorry, I'll wait my turn.
I'll weigh, I'll weigh in on this. From the beginning, I thought that the, all of the regulations at the FPPC was adequate. I, I don't wanna see it evolve into something local that the city or the council has any jurisdiction over, because I don't like the tone. I like the FPPC, I think there's a great tool for reporting violations of the Form four sixty and four seventy. I think there's enough oversight. To put another layer on there, and that can be skewed, is not anything that, that I desire. So, I do agree with dissolving the campaign, because, man, all these years, we've been going with the FPPC, and then, all of a sudden, we have this. So, what's been good for decades, decades and decades, is now all of a sudden, not good? And I don't see all the huge campaign finance contributions you're talking about, because I review all the candidates for sixties, and for the likes of me, I couldn't find anything that was developer-driven, maybe the SEIU, but, but they've always done that. You know, this is just unnecessary. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Richmond?
Thank you. I'll wheel out my credentials. I spent about, I raised and spent about thirty-six hundred dollars for, for my campaign. There's a few hundred dollars more than my opponent, and I won. I took no contributions more than ninety-nine dollars. I took no contributions from any corporation. I was endorsed by a union, SEIU, I took no contribution from that union, none. I think I'm on solid ground when it comes to campaign finances, when I took no more than ninety-nine dollars from anybody. Okay? Not a dollar from a corporation. I don't know if anybody else sitting up here could say that. I took no PAC money. I know there are people up here who took PAC money. So, now the people who took PAC money, who took five hundred dollar contributions, who took money from anybody that didn't get it, now some of them wanna do reform. You know why they wanna do reform? Because they're in office. All of a sudden, they, they decided they don't want their competition to be able to get money. There's problems with campaign financing in the United States, but the problems that exist are constitutionally protected, whether we like it or not. So, one thing we cannot prevent is, we cannot prevent a person with a lot of money from raising all the money, their personal money they want, and spending it. So, I'll use an example. Let's say there's somebody on this dais here who runs for office again, who perhaps has some investments worth a million dollars or two million dollars. They can take all the money they, they want of their own money, and spend all the money they want of their own money to get elected, and they wanna make sure that somebody running against them has limits on them, when there's no limit on the guy with the money. Let's say there's somebody here on this dais who's insulted, because they were attacked by a third-party independent spender. They cannot do anything about that, because that's constitutionally protected. Just ask the state, ask the FFPC, FPPC, they've published guidelines. Ask the League of California Cities, who's published guidelines on, on reform. You can't do a damn thing about it. So, they wanna make sure they're reelected, and this is the way they go about it. They wanna make sure that whatever strength the opposition has, they take that away, but keep their own. So, I'm opposed to this. I'm also think that essentially what's gonna happen is, we're gonna wind up with pressure on, on whoever our election official is locally, to, to, to act against some people who violated, who, who they claim will violate the law. This is not a problem. You couldn't see that problem in the last election. Who's complaining? I mean, incumbents usually win, in this case, an incumbent lost. So, what, what's the complaint? I don't get it. What's, what's the big violation here? Somebody took five thousand dollars? Hey, I'm gonna be very specific, they say I pick on the mayor. Well, I'm not picking on him, he just happens to be a bad example in this case. The mayor took money from a PAC, and now he's gonna complain you shouldn't take money from a PAC? Well, what's he gonna do, give up his office, 'cause he got elected with PAC money? I mean, come on. Give me a break. Okay? You can shake your head all you want, you took the money from, grow the, grow the vote, that's a Republican PAC. Just look it up, it's on your four sixty. Read the form, for God's sakes. He also took, he took a thousand dollars from the PAC, nine hundred and fifty dollars, and he took four hundred and fifty-five dollars in, 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 uh, non-monetary contributions from the same PAC. So, he took money from a Republican PAC, and now he's saying, I don't like anybody who takes PAC money. That's crazy. I didn't take any PAC money. You can check my four sixty. They're filed. Just ask, just ask the city clerk. This is ridiculous. Okay?
Uh, any speaker cards?
I have no speakers, Mr. Mayor.
You know, I, I love the conversation of, what has the mayor done? What has the mayor done?
Yeah, what have you done?
I'm, I'm, I have the chair. This is a mayor-appointed ad hoc committee. You might not like it, but it's an appointed committee. So, hey, Mr., I'm sorry, Councilmember Lenore, I have the chair, thank you very much. As Councilmember Rosendez pointed out, all we do is go back, look at information, look at what other communities are doing, does it work, does it not work? Let's have a conversation. But no, we're gonna get rid of what the mayor wants, and then we're gonna come back and say, well, the mayor doesn't do anything. Folks, you wanna know why? This is exactly why. That's how it works around here. Nobody's saying you can't get contributions from people, but I think we can all agree that there should be some limits, and we should make that change here in our local communities, so we can see the change in our state, and see the change at a federal level. But now, we don't wanna make the change. We're excited, not anymore, so let's kill whatever the mayor wants to do. All I wanna do is have a conversation about campaign finance reform. Let's find a better way to run campaigns in our community. Doesn't mean we outlaw money, let's just figure out what it is, that's all. Okay, is there a motion?
I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion, Resolution Twenty-Nineteen One Eighty-Nine, Resolution City Council, City Hall, in dissolving the Campaign Finance Ad hoc Committee.
Okay, there's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion, second. Can we have a roll call vote, please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Rosendez?
No.
Vice Mayor Richmond?
Yes.
Mayor Velazquez? Councilmember Spencer? Councilmember Lenore?
Aye.
Okay, motion.
And it passes by three-two?
Three-two. All right, let's move on to item F-four.
Item F-four is my item that I am bringing, when we, on August fifth, when we adopted the resolution for the new SB media public noticing contract, we discussed that there would be a way for us to perhaps lower our costs. The city clerk's office alone budgeted seven thousand dollars for legal public noticing in fiscal year twenty eighteen nineteen, and the city clerk's office was overbudgeted by four thousand three hundred and seventy-six dollars, which is largely due to the legal requirements for adopted ordinance public noticing. So, currently, we've been going by Government Code Section Three Six Nine Three Three A. The city clerk's office is required to publish the full text of an adopted ordinance in an educated newspaper within fifteen days of adoption. There have been times when the full text of an adopted ordinance is upwards of thirty pages long, and the cost of publishing can be as high as three thousand plus dollars for a ordinance, based on the contractual costs that we receive from the newspaper. The city clerk's office researched and found that there is an alternative that other city clerks are using, which would be Government Code Section Three Six Nine Three Three C. But in order to do this, it will result in a cost saving to the city, but the city clerk's office would need to publicly notice a summary of the ordinance in a newspaper two times within a specific timeframe. It would require that the city clerk's office set an earlier deadline for staff to submit proposed ordinances for the first reading. The deadline would be approximately one week earlier than the due date for other staff reports. The proposed due dates are listed in, I, we, I attached that in our, my staff report, and I do have an example calendar of what just one, one cycle would look like. So, for instance, if an ordinance was going for a first reading on September third, we would require staff to turn in, approved by our city attorney, the full text of an ordinance on the fourteenth, which would be, normally, our due dates would be, our, our normal due date would've been the twenty-second for all other staff reports, so this would be just for ordinances only. By giving it to us on the fourteenth, we would be able to submit that to the newspaper by the sixteenth. We would have to submit it by the sixteenth at noon, in order for them to publish that on the twenty-third. According to Government Code Section Three Six Nine Three Three, it would have to be a minimum of five days prior to the council meeting. So, by doing it this way, we would get it in way before. If we tried to do it any later than that, it would not make it in five days prior, because if we submitted it on the twenty-third, the thirtieth would not give us those five days. So, then on September third, if the ordinance was introduced and passed by council, then it would go to the sixteenth to be submitted for the second reading. At that point, the city clerk's office would submit it to the newspaper for the second publication on the twentieth, for it to be published in the newspaper on the twenty-seventh. Now, it does require us to publish twice, but they would be smaller, it would be by title only, with the statement date of when the public hearing was gonna be for that introduction ordinance, what the, on the second one, after it's adopted, it would be what the vote was from council to adopt it or not adopt it, and the full text would be available in the city clerk's office for anyone to view. This is what other city clerks have done, and it has saved them thousands. I don't know what, I don't have a dollar amount, I just know it's thousands in savings.
Okay. Any questions, comments?
Yeah, I had a comment, I wanna thank the city clerk for coming up with this. Our, our bill at the freelance was up to twenty-three or twenty-five thousand dollars a year, and much of that was because we are, we are publishing ordinances word for word, when there's no need. We can do it by title only, number one, and I think that's very important, and I thank the city clerk for coming up with a way to save thousands of dollars.
Okay. The only, the only question I have is, are you sure you could, with the timelines being so tight, you can make that happen with the departments? So, if you're comfortable, I mean, it's always a good, hey, we could save money for the public and put it to the roads, hopefully?
I mean, if I tried to ask staff, if it doesn't work, I could ask staff to submit earlier, but right now, they're already cringing at the week earlier, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna push us, us to only have two days to format it and, and get it ready for public review.
Okay. Any other questions, comments? Do we have any speaker cards?
I have no speaker cards, Mr. Mayor.
Is there a, a motion?
I know that we got Resolution Under Two Thousand Nineteen Dash One Nine Zero, creating a policy for public notice for ordinance in the city of Hollister.
Is a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second, yeah, hold, hold second.
We all want it.
Motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Motion carries. Thank you very much. We'll go to G-one, Reports from City Councilmembers Regarding Their Committees.
I have a question. I have a question.
Okay.
At what point in the meeting do I bring up future topics that I would like agendized?
On number two.
That's now.
No, no.
No, the next one.
Next item.
Again, this is the committees we serve on?
Yeah.
I'm ready.
These are the formal ones.
I prepared today, it took me a while, 'cause I, I had some good meetings. I went to AMBAG that you appointed me to, and I had to tell you how I missed one. I really enjoy those meetings with those folks over there. And so, I went to AMBAG on August fourteenth. I gave you a handout, it's the update on the local government planning support. Please read it, 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 there is a change in that process. It would appear that the HCD is gonna give you two meetings before they make you do what they want you to do. So, they're not just gonna find you right away, they're gonna meet with you twice, and that's, that's noted on there. And you probably know, if you haven't already had it reported to you at your COG meeting, that we did have, for the public's benefit, we had a total of two hundred and fifty million dollars given to the, one hundred and twenty-five to the local jurisdictions, and a hundred and twenty-five to our region by the governor. The Central Coast is a mega-region, so we're also gonna get another six point five million and two million dollar incentive. It's gonna be all reported there to the COG. We have a, we have a, a thing that's coming up, and, and I'll just tell you that, they're gonna look for the COGS, or the, the entities to make a multi-county working group, which will consist of two city members, one county supervisor, and that's gonna, there's four COGS in central, the Central Coast region. AMBAG, San Benito County COG, San Luis Obispo COG, and Santa Barbara Association of Governments. And then, the last thing that I'll report on, well, no, I wanted to say here that, yeah, local jurisdictions funding, it would appear that maybe we're gonna fall in the medium funding, which I hope, maximum funding of three hundred, three hundred thousand. That's for planning-related activities, i, i, that's really what it's intended to do. So, they want you to, they want you to take that money in, in rezoning and encouraging development by updating planning documents and zoning ordinance, and also, you can use it for completing environmental clearance to eliminate the need for project-specific review. You can establish a workforce housing opportunity zone. You can establish a workforce housing opportunity zone, it'll also allow you to revamp local planning process to speed up production. This is the state saying they want production sped up. And then a creation of improvement of accessory dwelling unit ordinance, which I'll say we've had one for 25 years. We're, 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 they're leading the way on secondary units, because that ordinance has been a long time in the city of Hollister, so I think that's a good job we did in the past. Gives you the deadline, there's a couple of copies out there in the public area. The last is the update on the Energy Watch update, I think you heard me talk about before, they were targeting $6 million kilowatts per hour. So at the close of six months into this year, they've achieved 3,640 and 817 kilowatts, so 60% into their annual goal, 60% of their annual goal is completed, and that was school districts and county entities, and it's really a money saver, the county really benefited from that. I'll move on to Water Resource Association, I met August eighth, had a busy day that day, preparations, they wanted to, me to please mention, they're making preparations for the county fair, the Water Resource stated if the city would like to put any kind of literature or anything at all in their booth, they would encourage that, they would be happy to include any reports the city would have on water in their, in their booth there. And then also, the last thing at the Water Resource Station, as they suggested, apparently, and I haven't been involved, I know you have, Roland, the fire station number two park, something about a rain garden, they wanted the city to contact 4H regarding the possible rain garden at fire station number two, and 4H has experience with rain garden. So somehow, they've discussed it, I didn't go to those meetings, but if there is a rain garden, we want to approach the 4H, if you don't mind. Okay, moving on to the Area Agency, this was, this was really, this was really good, I forgot my thing again, I know that one can hear me, and it's on. So, Area, I'm on the Area Agency on aging, and we had our last meeting at the Santa Cruz Museum of Art History, it was really cool, I even braved the going far away from home to get there, but I really wanted to get there. So they discussed this very important thing that I left on your DS, it's age-friendly cities, age-friendly communities, this is a big thing coming up, it's driven by the AARP, it'll focus on creating locally-based age-friendly communities, and the beauty part is, it's, it's good to tie it into your general plan, and guess what we're doing, a general plan. So we need to hook staff up with maybe Clay Kempf from Area Aging, or even the AARP, because we really should discuss the, the, we really should discuss age-friendly communities, we've already kind of been doing it, we understand the importance of connectivity, we understand safe school route, these are all parts of age-friendly, it's not just for older people, it's also for, for kids as well, so I'm really looking forward to, they're going to come and make a presentation. Santa Cruz County has already officially endorsed to become an age-friendly community. Let's see, so they hosted the presentation at Santa Cruz, one more thing, I think it's the last thing here, yes, so, also remember, the CalFresh expansion includes the folks on CalFresh to utilize it at the farmer's market, or any, excuse me, Medi-Cal recipients are now eligible for CalFresh, there was an issue before where they weren't. So if you're, if you're Medicare, excuse me, is it Medicare or Medi-Cal?
Big difference.
Am I trying to say, is it Medicare? Well, there's a big difference, but I think if you're on Medicare, oh, why am I confused now? Oh, God, it's...
Probably should verify.
Yeah, I'll verify, I reported it on the last meeting, but it's Medicare. So if you have Medicare, you're able to utilize, no, it's CalFresh, CalFresh is, the food stamps, correct?
Yes.
It's all right, I'm sorry, I'll clarify it at the next meeting, but I did report on it already, for some reason, I'm confused, I'm so sorry. Okay, and then, that's it on the committees. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Spencer?
I have nothing to report.
I'll look it up right now.
Vice Mayor Richmond?
Thank you, I feel like a Piker, I only went to one committee meeting, that was cog. What were the main things? Well, the, I think the final decision or vote on, on cog's feeling about the roundabout has been put off until next month, if I got that correct, if I remember correctly. We did talk about some other issues with the LTA, especially, I was concerned about the number of no-shows on the dial-a-ride, people who are, ask for a ride, the bus goes to the, directly to their home or other area where they want to be picked up, it's like a taxi cab almost, and they're not there, they're no-shows. Now, a lot of people call and cancel when they don't need it, but there are many no-shows, and those no-shows are, are an issue, so they're going to look into that. It was the same old discussion about the roundabout, you know, until we're blue in the face with Caltrans. I don't know, the mayor can certainly fill in, he was there, he can fill in, and, and that was really my only report. Thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Resendez?
As far as ad hoc committees go, I met with the gentleman Sergio, who owns the smoke shop downtown for the ban on vaping. I really enjoyed that meeting for a couple of different reasons, he's a smoke shop owner, but he's very proactive, he took all of the, the notes that you guys had given him at the last meeting, and he's going to go ahead and post those signs that were asked for, and I really appreciate that he's going out of his way to do this and getting ahead of the game. And the other thing that he has, that I thought was really cool, was a card reader, so anytime someone purchases a tobacco product, I guess, he has to swipe their card, their ID, to make sure that they're over the age of 21, and I don't think that's something that everybody has here, so I just really commend him, I really appreciate him taking the time to reach out to me, I look forward to continuing the conversations. I was contacted by Public Health via email, they are going to also contact council member Spencer, so we can all sit down and meet and continue the conversation on banning vape, so, thank you.
Okay. Just add to the cog conversation that we had the other week, the state, the larger cities and communities have once again figured out a way to take most of the SB one monies, which none of us should be surprised about, and it's, it's why we keep having these problems, we vote for more taxes, and then San Francisco and LA drive up in armored vehicles and take it all away. It's going to hurt us, it really is going to hurt, it's going to make a difference on a lot of our plans, it's just a shame that these things keep happening, and they want us to make up for it. The roundabout is a ongoing conversation, it's a concern, been many people at our meetings voicing their, their concerns about this roundabout, it's been put off for another month, but I think it's time that we bring this to the city council and either reject or support that roundabout, because it seems to be something Caltrans wants to do, no matter what, and I think we should just show our, again, our support, or show that we're against it, but we need to make a stand here in the city council, because it's, most of our residents are going to be tangled up in that traffic.
So we want to have, something on the agenda that, do we have an idea about which way we're going yet?
I, look, I, also, as I say over and over at the meetings, I've lost all confidence in this roundabout, I personally believe it's going to become a, a major problem for this community for quite a while, it's a throwaway, and it's, it's a shame that we're going to spend $10 million plus. Government says 10 million, you can figure 20 million before it's done, and that is going to be something that's probably good for five to eight years, which is just probably not the wisest investment, and I think it's time we, we just take a stand on this. We've given our ideas and our input about suggestions that we've seen out, different communities, and it's still moving forward, so.
Can I, can I add to yours?
Yes, you can.
Because it's cog, thank you, Mr. Mayor, I'm so glad we can agree on something.
Wait, let me change my mind, I think, I want to fully support.
I'm sure.
Fully support.
You didn't let me finish, I'm sure, I'm sure one of us is wrong, okay, was my next line, okay? I'm sure one of us is wrong, but 10.8 million dollars for, for a fix like this is just, you know, I have no doubt it'll, it'll reduce fatalities, and that's important, but the truth of the matter is, we haven't had that many fatalities, we have had to over the last 10 years, or something, eight or 10 years. But 10.8 million dollars, I mean, I just can't, I can't fathom 10.8 million dollars for what's essentially a temporary fix until the 25 goes in, so we're in agreement, a rare, a rare moment, please record it on the video.
Please, showing me, showing his support for me. We're going to go ahead and move to item G two, informational reports from city council.
G two, informational reports, I had a meeting with the Susan Bog at the library, and it was, you know, along the lines of what we did this evening, and wanted to report that. She did have concerns with the impact fee and where the money was maybe going to end up, totally, we'd have to look into that. She did give me a couple of items from the library, that Zip Books, I told her I would mention the library utilizes Zip Books, it's a service at your local public library, then there's also, I believe they, the service was Zip Books, was they can get the publication for you, or you download it online. There's also the handout for a canopy, and the canopy with a K offers more than 30,000 of the world's best films, and including rare and hard-to-find titles, award-winning documentaries, so you can also pick up this sheet that allows you to do that. They're also utilizing the cloud, Cloud Library, you can download free books and e-audio books, there's 90,000 books and audio books to choose from, these are some of the services that we talked about when we were there. There's also a master file, and you can download over 1,700 magazines and journals, so they have all these handouts there in the library, you really can get a lot, along with their monthly schedule, so they were, they were so kind to share all that with me, I encourage people to go over there. Future agenda items, it's been brought to my attention that we are now requiring business licenses for nonprofits that are not selling a product downtown, i.e. the 4H and things, and I don't know that it's in, I'm not sure what's driving that, so I want to know more about that, and I think we have to give, have a discussion, unless there's still state law that requires that we do a business license for nonprofits that are not selling a product. If that's the case, then there's no discussion, but I think maybe we're going to have to discuss something along the lines for the farmer's market regarding the business licenses. Could we do that?
Sure.
I promised them I would talk with you, but I don't know that it's just a me and you thing, I think maybe we might have to give direction.
I'm more of a Brett.
It is a Brett thing, but that's what I want to know, is it driven by state laws, that are, do we have the power to say, and have the discussion of nonprofits at the farmer's market?
Without, without getting...
Right, we can't talk about it now, so...
Not so much, but I would, I will say that I think that we expect that, would you want to have a conversation about the business license tax, anyway? Well, we're going to agendize something...
I'll tell the group this.
But it's going to be an overarching sort of discussion, not necessarily, but we can hit on...
If we can't get it done by this year's farmer's market, then we'll have a more better answer maybe for them on this issue at the next farmer's market. I know they're not going to maybe like that, but I think it's a group discussion, okay?
We go through this every year, wouldn't we?
So let's, let's discuss that, okay, and then I came over the, the issue recently of RVs in the right-of-way, and I got an eye-opening experience, and I know you're going to agree with me on this one, so I want to talk about the city's PD's limitation on getting those right-of-way, those RVs off the right-of-way, especially when they're being lived in. So we got an issue, and it's not good, and I want something done. And then also, the final item, I want to remind the city council that when the passage of Measure W did call out for an oversight committee, and I should have brought it up before now, somebody should have brought it up, we have to do a Measure W Oversight Committee, because they're the reporting body for the taxes, I know, because I spent five years on the Measure E Oversight, so if the, if the, if the ballot measure said we do that, we said we would do that, then we have to do that, it's part of the ballot measure, remember?
Correct.
Measure W, it's a 20-year tax, I don't expect people to stay on for 20 years, but maybe we can discuss it, and then we're going to have to open it up for people to apply, maybe five-year terms, I don't know how we're going to do it, that's why we need to talk about it, and it needs to get done.
I don't know how to, if we should talk about it right now, but I believe the first time, it was done by a random picking of the voters? I believe that's how it was done the first...
I applied for it, and I thought it was a...
Okay, so let's definitely not talk about it right now, we're going too far with it, but...
Okay, well, we need to, we need to place a Measure W...
Point taken, yeah.
Oversight, thank you, that's all I have.
All right. Councilmember Spencer?
On the 14th of this month, I went to a ribbon cutting at the San Benito County Foundation over on Felice Drive, guest speaker was Jimmy Panetta, I haven't been in that place in years, and it's absolutely beautiful. And then, I didn't do a lot this last week, yesterday was the First Annual Growing Hearts Walk and Run, and it was at Brigantino Park, it was a 10K, which I did participate in, very beautiful park, the, the walking path is 1.24 miles, so walk it five times, it's 6.2 miles, and that's all I have to report.
Thank you.
I forgot something.
Okay.
It's important, but I'm going to report on it at the next meeting, so I did attend the, and this was important, and I see it back here, I forgot it, I did go to the, on August 8th also, had like four things that day, Economic Development Court, but we started with, started with that, and we moved into the, the San Benito Business Council, I'll give you a, a good report on the next meeting, you did meet Mr. Randy Starbuck tonight, very impressive gentleman, I'm hoping he'll get us a, a really good director, I'll give you a better report when, when the next meeting comes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor Richmond?
Thank you very much, I'd like, I'd like, if I can get a majority of council to agree, I'd like to get some, some important items on the next agenda. The first one would be, I think we ought to ask for a, an update every meeting on, on where the general plan is, so we can, we can, we can know if we're making progress, moving along or not. The second item is a big change, I would, I think the city council should consider moving the tentative vested map approval to the city council rather than the planning commission. The reason is because it involves a, a, a commitment on our part to do, to, to spend money or accept things automatically, and since, I don't think that should sit with the planning commission, I think it would sit with us, so that we would, would get the tentative vested map, and we can decide whether or not we want to make a commitment or not. The third item is, I want to add, I want to add a sunset clause to the growth management ordinance, but not to sunset the ordinance, but to sunset the allocations, so that people cannot get allocations to sit on them for 20 years. I mean, this just has me very upset, that we've got, we've got developments coming in that are 19 years old, okay? We need to get the growth control ordinance back in here and get it approved, and we need to get the inclusionary housing ordinance in here and get it approved, and as you can tell by my list, I am determined to get, to get this issue taken care of, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Resendez?
All right, I was busy, there's a lot of things to report on as far as informational. On August 7th, I went to the Vets Hall, and I attended the Complete Streets Community Meeting, good job to Planning Department for putting that on. I just want to encourage everybody watching and listening to please go to these meetings, we really need community input, it was a really good turnout, but if you guys are not there, then we have other people that are going to be driving their own interest in agendas, and we want to see everybody included in these, because it's very important of how our streets are going to turn out, and some of this might be adopted into the general plan. I was not there at McCarthy Park dedication, probably people that are here can report on that, but my little girl got to attend through the YMCA summer camp, and I was very fortunate. And I was very fortunate to, um, get to live that through her, I had to work unfortunately. Um, so big shout out to Tina, Parks and Recs Department for putting that on and everybody involved in that. I met with, um, that was on August eighth. On August tenth, I met with Tina from Parks and Recreation about trying to get some more, like, looking at other cities and seeing what they're doing as far as getting events downtown to promote business and just community involvement and, and whatnot. So, I was real excited about that. I think she might've sent out an email about Papa Park that's potentially coming out. Uh, also on August tenth, I went to, I was invited to go tour the Pregnancy Hollister Pregnancy Center. Um, I put a post on Instagram about that, but they're doing some amazing things there, all for free. They are entirely donation ran. Um, they're giving out diapers, formula, clothing. So I really encourage if you can, um, go support them or if you're needing that service, to go to them and they can help you out, um, even medical services as far as prenatal. Uh, I too attended the, um, the ribbon cutting at the Hollister, uh, what is it? San Benito Health Foundation on August fourteenth in my district along with Supervisor Hema Delacruz. They're doing some pretty phenomenal things as far as energy savings over there. So I was happy to take part of that and support the board on that. And then August eighteenth of yesterday, right? Yeah, yesterday I was invited to tour and the, um, at the Seventh Day Adventist Church here in Hollister of Sunny Slope. They actually, uh, there's a nonprofit that puts on a free health clinic, I guess, once a year here. Um, and they gave dental services, like a multitude of dental services, vision and health services. And it was really cool. Um, I was so glad to go watch it, be a part of that, and I was very impressed. Lastly, I just wanna speak to, um, our friend lobbyist consultant that was up here during public comment earlier. Um, I do not know how to communicate. I feel like when I'm sitting up here on the dais, I have a responsibility to maintain, maintain some type of professionalism and some type of quorum. But I am also elected to represent my views and my interests, and I was trusted by the people. I do not know how to, let's say, dance around issues, especially in the media or in one-on-one or in a social media platform. I don't know how to do that. Uh, if you ever wanna have a very frank conversation with me, um, please do so, reach out to me. If you're following me on social media, you will see that I'm very open and honest. I do not appreciate or respect people that do things behind closed doors. I do not make threats, physical threats to people. I will not cuss at people. And the reason I bring these up is because these things have been done to me. I have the right of free speech just like anybody else, and I intend to fully use that. I think that the point that they want agendized is just another tactic of the lobbyists and the consultants here in town to try to shut me up and not have me speak my mind. But I don't know how to do that, and I will continue to do that. I look forward to having the discussion. Hashtag sorry-not-sorry.
Oh, brother. It's his view.
You're lucky I don't read baseball.
His, his council member. Um, my comments here. Bill, we, we talked about a, maybe we can do a temporary dog park somewhere. If we can keep moving forward on that, it's, it's gonna take a while and we keep finding different.
Yeah, we, I, Mike said, we were, we're working on trying to figure out how to do.
Okay, we can do something, I'm sure the dog owners would be happy to hear that, it's very important. The conversation about the rally for two thousand twenty. I want to have the vote on this. I do not wanna get to the point of January, February and say, well, gosh darn it, it's too late to talk about the rally. If we're gonna have it, let's vote on it. If not, vote no. But we need to have that conversation, it's only fair to people. I've recently spoken to the promoter, um, and he's surprised, he's feeling that, are we even interested in doing it anymore, what's going on? I have no idea, but I'm sure it's gonna be coming for a vote, and that's why I'm asking to make sure we, we put that to a vote. I was gonna bring up, ask you for the update on the roads, but I heard you say earlier, you're bringing that forward pretty soon?
Uh, September third, you have a, you know, if you ask to, um, do one of the Chicksville projects that we have coming up, and then we're, we're working on the eighteen, the nineteen twenty road as well.
But we had agreed on several roads for this year.
Yeah, the, what, the resolution that you did for SB one earlier this year is actually for calendar year nineteen twenty, or is that fiscal year? And then, so the ones that we're working on, it's Chicksville project that is for this year. It's always like a year behind.
Right, I know, but I thought we had lined up for each year, so we would be having some work done.
Yeah, we, we have money, and then I think that the other part of it is, is that we're working with, uh, trying to figure out when, when we're gonna start to acknowledge our, our C, our sales tax law, um, from Measure G, and we can maybe add roads to the list as we report.
Okay. Since we need a complete report, so we're, we're clear on this. So I'm gonna ask these questions that I do all the time. I wanna be clear about this, I don't want this conversation of, well, nobody said anything. As I've said before, we need to put a temporary freeze on processing any more applications, residential applications, until we get the general plan updated. Now, I've looked into different, um, things, different, uh, people that do these general plans, and I've seen them comment that it is wise that if you're doing an update to hold off on approving any other projects or processing until your plan updated, so we know what we're looking for as a community. That's what I've been asking for, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask for it again, and I'm gonna ask for us to vote on this. I think it's important that we have this conversation and we don't just say, well, nobody ever said anything. It gets frustrating to hear this over and over again. Same goes for annexations. We need to stop or do temporary freeze until we get that plan updated. We know what we're trying to do, what's our sphere of influence going to look like? So we can plan accordingly rather than just, oh, well, it's too late, we, uh, approved this and that, now we're stuck doing it. I wanna make sure we're clear about it, because I, I don't wanna, I keep hearing that, well, I've never heard you say anything about this. Well, no, I have, many, many, many a times. I wanna make sure we're clear on that rather than just continue to hear this. The other thing that I wanna agendize is something, again, we're hearing too often, well, the mayor doesn't do anything, mayor hasn't done anything, mayor, 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 you're not doing anything. Well, I wanna make sure the public understands something. I don't even have an office here at City Hall. I'm not allowed to attend department head meetings. I'm not allowed to tell department heads what to do or anything else. Bill and I will have a conversation, but without the support of the council, I can't do anything. I've asked this before, I'm gonna ask it again. I would like to have this council support me to at least, at least attend department head meetings to be involved with those discussions. It's not the first time I've asked for it.
But you don't have any more power than the rest of us.
Hang on, hang on, hang on, I'm speaking. The public believes a mayor has some process in this organization. They're always surprised to find out that I'm not allowed to be involved in any conversations within the city, any department head meetings or anything else. So I wanna make sure that everyone understands that. So when others come back and say, well, you've been here, why didn't you make that happen? Well, I didn't make it happen, 'cause I can't make anything happen behind the scenes. 'Cause I can only, I can only be here. And there's not the support, nothing changes. And if the council wants a vote no on things, I'm perfectly fine with, with that. But I wanna make sure it's put out there, so it's clear, so we don't have to hear anymore, well, the mayor should've done this and that. Well, no, the mayor can't do anything like that without the support of the council giving him that authority, and I want the public to know that. You have a mayor that can't do absolutely anything, no department head meetings, anything else. And I'm asking for the support of this council to be allowed to at least attend those department head meetings and be part of that conversation. Because people are always asking, what are we doing about this, what are we doing about this, on and on? And I have to say, I really don't know. Until I go to a city council meeting or hear something more, I don't know. So I want that to be put to a vote and have this conversation.
Yeah, I wanna have the conversation.
Thank you, council member.
I, I'd like, I'd like to point out, I'd like to point out, that's against the municipal code, that's against the municipal code.
I have the floor, thank you.
No.
No, no, I have the floor.
No, you're, you're, you're asking for something that is illegal, sir.
Mister, Mister Richmond, I have the floor. You can bring that up in that way, and we could see what that law is, how it can be changed. And then they could go on to vote no if they wish, okay? But I don't wanna be in a situation where, well, you're the mayor, you should've done something. You're hearing it. So, that completes my report. City manager?
With that?
With that, city manager?
Um, okay, so, uh, well, I, I, I have a, a list of things that I, I need to do here, so we'll, we'll try to get those things scheduled as soon as possible. Um, but as I was sitting here, um, throughout the night, I, I think one of the things that can be said that ultimately falls on my shoulders is sort of, um, the lack of, of processing or the lack of where we are with the general plan. I mean, I'll, I'll shoulder a hundred percent of the blame, um, for not having that further along. But with that, I would ask one other thing, is I need all five of you to read our general plan. I want you to read our general plan, 'cause it was certainly a very aggressive in two thousand and eight when it was, or five when it was written. And I want you to take a look at the land use map, and in your mind, look at yourself and say, how would I want this to look differently? Because I think when you look at our general plan, you'll find that there's not a lot of areas in that general plan that you would wanna make wholesale land use changes. I don't want this council to use the general plan or lack of an update or any of the other things as a crutch for, for, um, approving developments. Um, and I think that, getting back to my list real quick, and we don't have to go into it any more than that, but, you know, um, you know, Marty asked for a sunset on allocations. You know, generally through the allocation process, we have a performance agreement that's written. And I think that could be simple term of, of that performance agreement. Um, we have, um, uh, the tentative map being approved by, uh, the, the city council. I think that's a wonderful idea. I think that if, um, and I assume that, uh, if the, you, you want the planning commission to see it first with a recommendation to the city council, if that's the way we wanna change our zoning code, that's fine. Why I'm kinda going down this path is I'd like to know, do you think that with site and architecturals and those types of things, is that also something that the city council wants to do? Or is it just about vesting tentative maps? Um, so, a- again, we're not gonna make those decisions, but sometime I, I, I probably need to understand exactly, um, what the, um, uh, what sort of your goal is about development and the, and the, and the units, et cetera. Um, I think everything else I can probably pretty much handle. Um, we'll, we'll have a, a regular agenda on the update. I think we're gonna be doing some interviews on the consultants here relatively quickly. Um, and then, uh, and then I'll work with Jason about, um, suspension of, of, um, applications, development applications, and what that looks like. Um, the mayor is absolutely correct. Many communities, um, within the final year of their general plan process, they generally do try to have some sort of, uh, uh, cutoff date so that things aren't done that are in direct, uh, conflict with a new general plan. Because the second you adopt your general plan, you don't want a lot of legal non-conforming uses when those types of things can be avoided. So, I absolutely agree with that process, we did that before, I would say that we should be doing it again. I don't know if, if now's the appropriate time, if you're, you know, three years in advance or where that lies in, but we can, we can, uh, present that to the, the entire council, um, uh, to, uh, for a vote or, uh, for some policy, and.
Annexation, suspension of annexations too.
Um, and, and that, and that's what it is. Is it annexation suspension or is it all development application suspension? And that's what I would, you know, we'll, we'll talk, we can talk about what your folks' sort of idea is. Um, and yes, for the public, um, uh, I'll just, give me thirty seconds on this. For the public who, who is, is blaming, uh, the mayor for administrative problems, you know, within the city, that is not his role. Um, that would be my role, my doors open, excuse me, all the time, every day. If you have issues with the way the city is run administratively, um, that's absolutely on me. The mayor's in charge of setting policy, um, that our, us as staff members try to implement. So, when we say the mayor can't do anything, that's half true. The mayor can't do anything without at least three or two other votes on the council for policy, um, very rarely. And I can't think of an example where, um, council members have a role in the administration of the city. It just doesn't happen. And I know that everybody has difference opinion and how it, we can argue about that, whether you're an at-large mayor or you're actually a mayor that, that acts as the city manager, 'cause that happens in some communities as well. Um, but that's the way those cities are, are set up. And we're just not, we're a general law city, so, okay, I'll stop.
Thank you. City attorney?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, no statement.
Okay. Uh, chief?
Certainly, uh, just an update on the RV ordinance, I'm still working on it. Probably be another, uh, month or so for me to submit it to council.
Thank you, city clerk?
Um, I just wanted to add that maybe not just the mayor, but all council, just saying. I'm just saying.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
Yes, Billy, okay. And, um, August twenty-sixth through thirty, if I'm gonna be attending a Pacific Leadership, um, class, it's, um, supposed to be a fresh leadership program, kind of an experiential learning. There'll be groups of six to twelve of us, and I'm really not sure what it's all about, but I know it's, um, a form of CPO, which is Continuing Education for Public Officials or something like that. So, um, I'll, I'll have a report for you when I get back, I'll look forward to that. That's it.
Thank you. We did G three already, we're gonna move to G four.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, there was a request to just get a, a brief revo- uh, report on some of the events, um, leading or that occurred over the Fourth of July weekend. So, if Mike is still here, and I'll have Dave and Bob, uh, sort of give, uh, just a brief update on, on everybody's sort of events and, and reports about what happened. Do you wanna go first or?
Sure, no problem. Um, so as you know, locally, we had, um, an event down at Bellato Park that, uh, we had personnel that supported that operation, um, especially in the intelligence area of that operation. It was, um, we had zero issues, um, not, not one, uh, with that or the related events at Bellato Park. Um, we had, uh, extra people on, we actually canceled most vacations that weekend. Um, we probably shouldn't have, honestly, it wasn't that busy. Um, there was, of course, on Fourth of July, a lot of fireworks. Our efforts to dissuade that were an abject failure, uh, from my, my viewpoint. Um, we had, um, I was actually out at the, the airport, um, for that event, and we were supposed to actually have two more officers out there, but it was so busy, not really from fireworks, just from calls for service, that, um, I was the only officer out, actually at the airport during the event. Um, and obviously those that went knew there was just a ton of people out there as well. Um, during that, 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 during the Fourth of July, during that night, um, extremely busy calls for service, a lot of stuff that I won't talk about here, but it was a very busy night. Um, and, uh, all the officers that we had that were extra that night were busy going to actual calls for service. And we did write several tickets, uh, for, uh, for fireworks, but mostly it was, uh, it was arrests and criminal complaints , um, over the weekend. Sunday was very slow, um, as we probably all saw as well. Um, and I'll be interested to hear what, with fires, I was listening to the radio that night as well.
Right, to, to reiterate what the chief is saying, it, it wasn't a very busy pertaining to any of the events. Uh, the fire department responded to, um, one hundred and forty-one calls, five of which were, uh, grass fires, two in the city, three in the county. Um, they were all, um, uh, initiated by illegal fireworks. Um, of the, uh, events that we attended or that we inspected, we had, um, total of, uh, three. We had, uh, the, uh, Bellato Park, we had the Corbin incident, or, um, event, and then, uh, an event at, um, Vets Hall. Uh, we also supported the, uh, Bellato Park, um, event, uh, at a ICP undisclosed. And, um, I wanna say we had nine fireworks booths that were inspected in, in the city, one in San Juan Batista. And, um, we did standby at the firework display with the, with one engine. We staffed up, um, three engines. Uh, we went, like I said, we had one hundred and forty-one calls in a time period of forty-eight hours, uh, which is a high volume, especially for that weekend. And it wasn't, it, it wasn't occurred by the, uh, they didn't occur by the, uh, rally or the events, they occurred by just it being Fourth of July. And that concludes my, my report, any questions? Any questions?
I was going to say, it sounds like we need more events. Keeps everything calm.
So as you're aware, at the airport, we did our first fly-in. Not sure what to expect. We had light participation, extremely light participation from the aviation community, and we had light participation from our community. Throughout the day, we had maybe 100 people out there every hour as we ran through the day. Later on, when Soul Kiss started to play, things picked up, a lot. And then obviously, when the fireworks, it got to be fireworks times, we were packed. So moving forward, we'll suggest we start at 6:00, do the Soul Kiss, do the fireworks display. The aircraft that you saw fly were all privately paid for by a private party. We're grateful to Sal Rabinow and for doing that. There were some very rare aircraft there. In fact, some things I'd never seen in the air before, like an Army P-38. So that was quite the show. So, all in all, I think it was a success. Traffic was a bear getting out of the airport. I think in the future, maybe if we do right turn only, head it out, and we close the lane to the north so that there's a free lane to turn into from San Felipe, we can maybe accelerate that a little bit and get you out earlier.
And Mike, you know, I was stuck in that traffic. Enjoyed the show, just great. I was really proud of what you put together out there. But I think it just needs a second exit somewhere, if possible, because I was watching, and the left turn was not the problem, because of those going right, we just continued to move, but there was just, that's what happens with success, right? You had so many cars, and all of them heading for one little spot was very difficult. So if there was a way to do something near the armory or something else, just for temporary type of exit, if possible, it would definitely help, definitely help, so.
Road that used to serve as a swank stuff there, I know it's...
Yeah, but you got to cross the runway.
Can't cross the runway. Yeah, you can't cross the runway.
The only other gate, you got to get out on taxiways, so.
If possible, think about that. Other than that, I tell you, we loved it this year, we really did.
Thank you for supporting it for nature.
I'd like, you'd just like to make a comment, oh, go ahead, please.
Yeah, if I may, Mr. Mayor, I just want to make a few comments, I guess. The rally, I really appreciate the feedback as far as like illegal activity or any incidences. I think that that just goes to show and proves that the fallacy of, you know, this old thinking about bikers being, you know, rebels and, you know, like troublemakers, like that's just not the demographic or the population of the modern-day biker. I really think that they are mostly professionals, and they want to come and to our town and to support our town, and they enjoy, you know, riding motorcycles. So I really appreciate that you pointed out that fact. As far as the airport, Mike, I mean, you've heard the praise time and time again. I went out there, fantastic job, love Soul Kiss, I love seeing all the community out there, dancing and then spending the rest of the night out there, rather than being at home, drinking and doing their own barbecues. I think it's safe to say that we can give them a venue to really express themselves and get together, so it's way more safe. My biggest concern, I got to be honest with you guys, I have a little girl, she's eight years old, I have a dog. I was really scared for them. My daughter did not enjoy, we went out to the airport, and then right before it got dark, we went to my mom's house, she happens to live on the west side. She did not enjoy the fireworks. I'm talking, every time one of those illegal fireworks went off, she would shake, you know, we have to carry our dog and stuff, and I've heard this from constituents time and time again. I'm just wondering, what are we doing to stop this? I know that you guys are busy and that you guys are going to get called out, but is fire available to ticket? I mean, I think that maybe there's a lack of enforcement, you know what I mean? I know that one time we had a, like a little app and stuff that we can call it in, but what are some things that we can do? Because I have to be honest with you, I'm not very familiar with it, but just from my own personal perspective and my own experience, I'm looking at things a little bit differently now that I'm up here, and I'm wondering how can we better support that process?
Surely I'll answer that. We actually, this is the first year we did not have the app. That company actually closed down. There is actually another app that just came out, and I'll be looking at that for next year. The only issue really for us, when we use technology like that, is we actually have to back it up with resources as well. And that's kind of difficult around the Fourth of July sometimes, depending on when, when if we have an event downtown. So it's kind of one of those things that we have to really plan for ahead of time. We've done it the last three years, this year we found out real late that no app was kind of nice. So we're kind of ahead of the curve right now for next year, because we do know there's one available. It's going to cost us a couple of thousand bucks, but we're going to do it. And we also know, of course, the dates and those things that are going to occur too. Next year's going to be a problem if we have an event, so we need to kind of pre-plan for that.
Thank you.
I have comments similar, very similar to council members in this. One of the things I'm concerned about is, do we have a mutual agreement for enforcement of illegal fireworks between us and the sheriff's department, the county?
Well, they have their own, they have their own ordinance, and they have their own issues that they respond to as well.
But can we respond to county violations and they respond to city, or?
In California, you can do that, yes.
Okay. I don't know the answer, so I'm not going to propose something, I don't know what the right answer is, but I can tell you, it is out of control. Everybody you talk to is going to tell you the same thing. And one of my constituents had a big old half of a, half of a massive cherry bomb, about that big, that they found the next day while they were mowing their lawn, okay? That was unexploded ordinance, they had to call the fire department. We've got to do something, I don't know what it is. It's the rally, I went out, I went also to two of the venues, and I talked to people who'd been at the third. It seemed to go off very well. Mr. Corbin told me it's the busiest they'd ever had up in their area. And I was up there, and of course, I was downtown, too. I'm sure we're going to, we're going to fight this out here shortly, but I like, I like it being sponsored by somebody local. I like it being sponsored by somebody local, because they are responsible people, that we know who they are, they live right here, they have good reason to make sure it's a success year after year. I do not, I'm really nervous about, about the out-of-town sponsors, okay? I mean organizers, not sponsors, wrong word. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. All right, we're going to go ahead and move to item...
Oh, wait, could I just add a little bit to Fourth of July stuff? With, I was just, I just wanted to make sure I didn't say anything totally inappropriate or untimely, but I understand that that was another item that you folks wanted to take a look at, is the 2020 rally. Breton and I, I think we have a potential solution to some of our workers' comp issues. We don't have that ironed out yet, and my question to the council is, is that I don't want, I want to be able to present you something that we can actually do before you actually take a vote, because I know that some of you have a huge concern over the exposure as it's related to that. So if you'll allow me to try to finally get an actual answer on how this potentially can work before I bring something to you, I'd appreciate that, only because I don't want to bring you something that's not quite ready, and then if it turns out that we could have done it, that, you know, we're in a bad spot. So I would like to just have a little bit more time to see if we can iron that out.
Absolutely, and appreciate you saying this, because, you know, the idea of not having a conversation, well, we got to vote on sooner or later, so you bringing that up, absolutely. Take the time to do it right, as long as we're doing it, we're moving forward with something. That's all I'm asking for.
We've explored a couple of different plans, they, some of them haven't necessarily worked out, but I think we have one last ditch effort here that we might be able to tackle, okay?
Okay. So now we'll move to item G5. Is this something you put on the agenda, city manager? I'm sorry? The creation of term limits?
No, no, no. This was requested by Councilman Richmond.
Yeah, I think we ought to have an ad hoc committee for the, to take a look at whether or not we want to create term limits and put it to the voters for, for both the city council and mayor's. A lot more, a lot more cities have term limits, and as you know, we have it at the legislature. So I think it's important, for anybody who's worried about this being some kind of vendetta, term limits in California cannot be initiated retroactively. They only can be done proactively, so you cannot go backwards, you can't count backwards, and you can't implement it backwards, you can only do it forwards. I think it's, I think it's well worthwhile looking at, it would have to go to the voters, and that's, that's my, that's my recommendation.
Just for a point of clarification, I thought Councilmember Spencer was the one that brought this item up during an informational report, am I wrong?
I think she mentioned it, but I wrote this.
Okay.
Councilmember, I think, first. So just so we're clear, everyone understands that there's a cost, as everyone says all the time. If you're going to do a vote, it's going to cost money. So, all right, so in that case, I will, since it's an ad hoc committee, I would like to appoint Councilmember Sendez and myself to be on that committee. All right?
Okay, I'd like to ask for one thing about this committee. With you two being on it, I would like to see reports of progress at every meeting.
Well, I don't know if we could do it at every meeting, but of course, we're going to report the progress of it.
Okay. Just want to make sure.
Part of what we have to do, of what's going on out there.
That's an unusual request. Do we require that of all the ad hoc committees? Why are we?
We will report when we're ready to be reporting on it.
Thank you.
Okay. Any speaker cards on that?
I have no speaker cards, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, then we'll move to item G6.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This one I put on the agenda. If you'll recall, you, Mr. Mayor, and councilperson Ray Friend, I believe, was on the ad hoc committee to begin negotiating property tax sharing agreement with the county a few, a couple of years ago or so. I'd like, I think at this point in time, I need this to sort of resurrect itself to some extent, so staff is recommending, as you know, property tax sharing agreement ends July, January 1 of 2020. It's about three or four months away, it's probably, in the grand scheme of things, it's probably really late in this game, but I certainly would love to be able to have an ad hoc committee that I can talk to CAO Espinoza about and have his board, and you folks get together and just start having those initial discussions. So that would be staff's recommendation. Thank you.
I would like to say something on this. I would, I would ask the mayor to appoint myself and Councilmember Lenore on this committee. Councilmember Lenore has a lot of planning experience. I don't have any planning experience, but I like to crunch the numbers. I think we, you may not like my numbers, but I do like to crunch them. I think we'll make a good team, and I think we'll come up with a proposal, and I'll be, I'd be more than willing to report whatever progress we have every meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. This is something I've been involved with in the past, I know this item very well. I would like to appoint Councilmember Lenore and myself to be on this, this committee.
In accordance with the, with the municipal code of the city of Hollister, I move that we overturn that appointment, and we appoint myself and Councilmember Lenore to that committee.
Well, we're going to go back to this conversation of, the mayor's role is appointing the ad hoc committee.
In accordance with the municipal code of the, of the, of the city of Hollister, I have the right to ask for a vote of the city council to overturn your appointments. It's in the municipal code, please ask the attorney.
Councilmember, please.
No, please. I am asking for a vote, I have a right to do so.
Hang on a second, I have the floor. Again, we're going to have this conversation, the role of the mayor, you might not like this, but one of those roles is to appoint the ad hoc committees. I do believe Councilmember Lenore does have the experience, and I surely have the experience, I was involved in it before. I think together we could work on something that works well, and we can come up with a solution on this.
Mr. Mayor?
That is why I appointed, I'd like to appoint Councilmember Lenore.
Mr. Mayor, in accordance with the municipal code of the city of Hollister, I ask for a vote to overturn your appointments. It is specific to ad hoc appointments, in the committee appointments, in the municipal code, which is the law of the city of Hollister.
Actually, you're incorrect. What you would have to do is vote to change the rules to be able to do exactly what you're...
Would you please, I'll ask the attorney, I'll ask the city attorney for a ruling on the municipal code.
Before, again, I just, I want to make something clear again. Here I am, presiding as mayor.
It doesn't matter, you only have one vote.
What little things I can do here...
You cannot, sir.
Yes.
The municipal code of the city of Hollister is clear. It says, you have that right unless you are overturned by a majority vote of the city council.
Absolutely not clear. City attorney?
I would like to review the municipal code of the city of Hollister concerning committee appointments, it's in the municipal code.
Yeah, I have a copy of that, though. One moment, please. What I would say is that the code is, does have certain vagaries, and if you wanted to do it the, the way that would be most proper or easiest to do, because I don't have, I know you used the phrase, Councilman, or Mayor Protem Richmond, asking the city attorney for a ruling on the matter. The only one who can actually make a ruling on any sort of matter like this would be the person who's controlling the meeting at the moment, at least procedurally. What I would recommend is that if this is the direction you want to go, you do actually make a motion to temporarily suspend the rules that govern the city council, and then take a vote on how to address the ad hoc committee.
Fine, I'll make a motion that we temporarily suspend the rules that govern the city council.
So, attorney, that is un-agendized as a vote item tonight?
It is not. The city council rules can be, under certain circumstances, suspended immediately. Ideally, it would be agendized for a future meeting. What we have here, again, the city council is also, excuse me, the protocols and the municipal code on this particular item are vague. We have what would, on the federal level, be considered a constitutional crisis. I don't want to make it worse or make it sound worse than it is, but we have some vagaries in both our protocols and our municipal code on this type of issue. Ideally, it would be agendized, agendized for a future meeting to temporarily suspend those rules and then address the ad hoc committee issue. But I cannot tell you exactly what a court would do because of the vague way in which some of our rules are drafted, if those rules are suspended immediately, in the absence of an emergency.
Would you do me, would you do me the favor and actually look in at the municipal code of the city of Hollister concerning committee appointments?
Yes, it's, the municipal code is section 2.04030.
Okay, and what does it say regarding committee appointments? Could you read it to me?
I will read it. All special committees of the city council should be appointed by the presiding officer unless otherwise directed by the city council.
Unless otherwise directed by the city council.
The problem we have, and I understand what you're saying, is that the protocols that were adopted several years ago are more vague as to ad hoc committees and special committees, and whether it's a committee that regards an outside organization, or appointments to a committee on an outside organization or one that's inside the city. I completely understand the point that you're making. I'm not even saying you're necessarily incorrect. I'm saying that if a judge were actually to address this issue, he or she would, would find it vague and have to make a ruling on it.
Well, I'll give him a chance.
The cleanest way...
I'll vote, I'll vote that we suspend the rules of the city council to, so that we can vote on the ad hoc committee. I, I will be, I will not be beat around the bush. I object to the mayor being on this committee, because I believe that the mayor's intention is to make sure that that agreement never comes to pass. Okay? I don't believe in beating around the bush. You don't like it, too bad. That's my, my motion.
So I want to make sure we're clear. The mayor's trying to appoint an ad hoc committee, but, no, no, hang on, hang on, hang on a second. The council member wants to suspend... The council member wants to suspend the rules to get his way. I just wanna make sure everybody's clear on this. So the motion from Vice Mayor Richmond is let's suspend the city rules so therefore he can get his way.
No.
And, no, absolutely, 'cause you don't believe I can negotiate the deal. So that would take a second from a council member to go ahead and suspend the rules so they can get their way. So is there a second to Mr. Richmond's request?
My second down.
Okay, there is a motion, a second to suspend the city rules so that Mr. Richmond can be on a committee he wants to be on. So can we please have a roll call vote?
Absolutely not.
Vice Mayor Richmond?
Yes.
Mayor Velasquez?
No.
Councilmember Spencer?
Yes.
Councilmember Lenore?
Yes.
And it passes by a three-two.
Okay, thank you.
Now I make a motion that we appoint...
I have a question for the council. What does that mean now? We just suspended the rules. Where are we at?
Excuse me. I have the floor.
There's no rules. I'm asking a question to the council.
I have the floor, sir.
So we can proceed.
I have the floor.
I haven't given you the floor yet.
You don't have to give me the floor. I had the floor.
Mr. Epperson, if you can just clarify, what does that mean? We just voted to suspend our rules. Where are we at now?
Sure, I just didn't wanna interrupt anyone. Essentially, the rules that may have prohibited the action that Mayor Protem Richmond wanted to take before would now be suspended and any of you could make a motion moving forward regarding this item.
So we just suspended that section of the rules regarding ad hoc committees?
Yes, for this particular item.
Not all rules, just this.
Okay. Thank you for clarifications.
That was my understanding of the motion that was made, at least.
Thank you.
Now, Mr. Richmond.
Well, that's very kind of you.
Absolutely.
I'll make a motion that, first of all, I'd like to speak before I make a motion. It's not so I can get my way. It requires three votes from the city council. Excuse me, sir. Don't interrupt me.
I've never interrupted any of you.
You just interrupted me.
Both of you, please.
Don't comment on what I'm talking about.
Mr. Richmond, make your motion.
Sir, excuse me. He may be, he may be your ally, but he has, don't interrupt me.
I've asked both of you. Please, go ahead and make your motion.
No, I'm gonna make a speech.
Okay.
It is not me that's making the rules. It takes the majority of the city council to make the rule. Is that correct?
Mr. Resendez? Mr. Richmond, make your motion.
Is...
He's trying to, there.
I would like to speak if you would allow me to have the floor.
I'm asking you, just make your motion.
Are you allowing me to have the floor?
You have the floor.
Thank you. It takes the majority of the city council to pass the motion. Therefore, I'm not making my rules. It's the majority of the city council. In accordance with the municipal code of the city of Hollister, the mayor has one vote equal to the same vote everyone else has. He has no more than any vote and no less than anybody's vote. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. This is not a charter city. The mayor is not a strong mayor position. Is that correct?
That's correct.
So I am making a motion for the majority of the council to consider that the ad hoc committee for the tax sharing agreement shall consist of Councilmember Lenore and myself. That's my motion.
Okay, there's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, let's have a, let's have a, let's have a roll call vote on that.
Have a roll call vote.
Councilmember Resendez?
No.
Vice Mayor Richmond?
Yes.
Mayor Velasquez?
No.
Councilmember Spencer?
Yes.
Councilmember Lenore?
Aye.
And that passes by a three-two.
Okay. Now we'll try to go back to our rules of the city and we'll go to G seven. I'm gonna recuse myself because I happen to own the property next door at the 400 block and to avoid any conflicts, I will recuse myself.
He probably didn't even really need to leave 'cause it's gonna be really, really quick and it's just an information item only. I got a request from council to try to determine exactly what the cost of the appeal was for the 400 block project. Cheryl's been working on this. We have the outside consultant costs of just roughly a little over $25,000, but that does not include staff time that went along with that. As you know, Mary Paxton was probably the primary person on that and so we're working on trying to get the hours, that, at least a conservative estimate on the number of hours that was spent by the planning staff, Mary, myself, et cetera. So we'll try to get that to you as quickly as we can and it may just be in an email form or whatever the case is and we don't have to talk about it at the meetings, but that's it and I'll report back when we get it all, when we get it all put together.
Question.
I think the point was, we didn't know the cost at the 400 block.
Mr. Resendez was first.
Sorry, Marty, Vice Mayor.
Yes?
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. Just thinking about this, I remember that we had the option to go with our own attorney in-house, correct?
Yes.
And the majority of this council voted to spend $25,000 to seek outside counsel? Is that what you're saying?
No, no, no. So I apologize, Councilman Resendez, the fees that we have up to date right now don't just include our outside counsel. It includes our counsel from Gold Farm and Littman. It includes inside counsel. It includes the publishing that's required in the paper. It was basically what we were able to do is everything that we had paid through our finance and our accounts payable was really pretty easy for us to gather. So that's, that kind, all those fees is what got to just write a $25,330.84. But what I don't have is the actual staff time that's associated with that or, and then also with our staff time, I could ask you folks if you wanted just the hourly for everybody or if you wanted all-in rates because that's a, that's quite a, that's a little bit different number than what you would normally get. For instance, if I make $100 an hour, which I don't, but all-in money is probably 140 or something along those lines and that's what I will be able to give. Includes benefit and then oftentimes finance directors will put in overhead for basically everything, so.
Comment?
Did you get your question answered?
Oh, yeah, sorry.
Yes, sir, Mr. Vice Mayor, sir. Thank you.
As a Councilmember Lenore.
I prefer to, please to report in the public meeting. We don't want it to an email.
Okay.
I think Marty's point when he suggested, well, we all wanted to know, but I think it was the dollar amount we were wondering what we spent on the 400 block of Hill by Ignacio Velasquez.
Okay.
No.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Councilmember Spencer, do you have any questions on this issue?
No. No.
I appreciate, I appreciate your comment, but that was not my point for asking. What I was gonna ask you was, have we reviewed the development agreement to see if any of those charges are reasonably, could be passed on to the developer under the, we have a part of our development agreement is, is a protection for some of this.
Oh, the indemnification hold on list?
Indemnification. I think I'm gonna suggest you review the agreement to see if any of those charges can legitimately be passed on, now some can and some can't depending on the definition in the, in the agreement. And I don't believe I'm qualified to make that decision, but it may have, some of the charges may have to go to the developer.
Sure. Okay. Well, that'll make my job a lot easier than on the back.
Okay, that's, that's, that's the taxpayers' money and I wanna make sure that they get their money.
I work with Jason, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Would you, would you go get the mayor?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
All right. All right, now we'll go to G eight, establish another ad hoc committee, so.
I've been a busy boy. I brought this one up too. I did a review of the T O T, otherwise commonly known as the hotel tax, and it turns out...
Let's hang it, let's, let's hear from the city manager.
Oh, no, that's okay. I was just gonna say, we, we've had the T O, we've had the transient or temporary occupancy tax as it's most commonly known throughout the region, I think twice now on the ballot and we've lost both times. The current T O T is 8% in the city of Hollister. We attempted at one time, I think, to get to 10%. This is not an uncommon tax, especially this time of year. I know some of our neighboring cities. I went to a manager's meeting on Friday. I think Santa Cruz County and Santa Cruz are all going to, to the ballot, I think in, was it March, to try to increase their hotel tax to, I think Santa Cruz is going to 14%. So anyway, the, the, Councilmember Richmond asked me to put this on to see if there would be a desire to go ahead and start again another grassroots effort to try and increase the amount of T O T that we currently have to, from eight to possibly 10, maybe with an escalator to 12 at some time in the future. This affects about six or seven hotels within the city of Hollister. It does not necessarily affect residents of the city of Hollister unless they are actually staying at the hotel, so this is usually a visitors, sometimes called a visitors tax. We are not suggesting that your V R, your V R B Os or your Airbnbs are being addressed at this time. Usually temporary means 30 days or less, so sometimes those are some of the questions that are, that are discussed. As you know, when you go to visit San Francisco or San Jose, San Diego, Anaheim, they're all substantially more than 8%. So we're just asking to see if this community would support a T O T increase to probably somewhere around the 10%, I'm guessing, so.
Bill?
Yes?
In the past, what was the feelings of those hotel owners?
Generally speaking, and I don't wanna speak for everybody, but a lot of the hoteliers, usually when, when they want to support the cities in these efforts, it's usually in return for that money going specifically back to a tourism or some sort of thing that would ultimately help their business as a whole. I think though, in this particular case, and I may be wrong, is that this city council recently has provided a considerable sum of money to the Hollister Downtown Association and the Chamber of Commerce to do tourism-type activities. So it's almost maybe that the city of Hollister has, council has stepped up before the actual tax increase. But again, generally speaking, I think hoteliers don't necessarily like the idea of an increase in that tax because they feel like it hurts their, their business or they gotta reduce room rates. I don't know, me personally, usually when I rent a hotel room in Stockton or something like that, I don't really ever know about whether it's 8, 10, 12, 14%. But I know that some of those folks really do, they watch that stuff. So I can't say I'm a very good person to ask or not an expert on this.
I think I remember the conversation where they weren't very happy about it and I'm wondering why it's gonna change this time. I understand there's always a need for more money. I just don't understand at this point why we're ready for this. Just going out and saying, we're gonna tax you 'cause we're gonna make things better. What does that mean?
And in the past, I think what, what we counted on probably, in hindsight, we probably shouldn't have, but we felt like at one juncture, there were some hoteliers that were really out doing the grassroots effort to try to get this done as, as part of the overall program. And like I said, we've lost this one both times, I think, pretty severely. I mean, it was, I don't need, I don't think either one was really that close, but again, I think that you've proven to this community that your tourism and business is important to you folks and hopefully that, that kind of trickles down to, to the hoteliers. Also with your, sort of your incentive program, let's be honest, you guys have done an amazing job in allowing the hotels to take advantage of some of this T O T to do improvements or to bill or some of those other things. So maybe now is just a little bit different time. I don't know. I mean, I'm not a very good judge of these things. I'm, I'm just not, so. Anyway, that's my speech, sorry.
Councilmember Lenore.
I, I would really sincerely hope that the hoteliers would support this. We do, we're very generous with the reimbursement, the T O T or what we give them and what we keep and I'd like to see some support for this and it is a low rate. It's, it's too low. Thank you.
Okay, anybody else? Council, Councilmember Richmond?
Thank you. Look, I checked, I checked, I checked what's going on. The county is already at 12 and let me tell you, the county has a tough time getting anywhere with this kind of tax. San Juan Batista's at 12%. Eighty, 81% of the cities in California, more than 80% of the cities in California that have a T O T, which are most of the cities in California by far, but like also 75 or 80% of the cities in California, are above 8%, okay? 200 of them are at 10% and a couple of hundred of them are at, are at, are at higher than 10%. So that's where everybody's going. That's where we should be. I should point out, I will point out, that we, we gave $2 million worth of T O T feedback at 8% to, to the Fairfield, right? And now we're looking at doing $2 million more for a Holiday Inn. I think it's only fair, I'm sure that we'll get their support, the biggest hotel in town, right? I think we'll get their support to move to at least 10. And I think what we ought to do is save an election. We ought to do 10% and three years later, automatically do 12%. I don't know how many hoteliers there are in town, but we've offered them the same T O T deal we offered everybody else. They didn't, as far as I know, they didn't even take it. You can correct me if I'm mistaken. They didn't take a dollar, right, Bill?
They qualified.
No.
Right. They, so they, they've shown no interest in moving in that direction, I think. Is that a fair statement?
No, they did not qualify.
Yeah, I said, because they didn't, they could have, they could have put money in and moved up their, their hotels, but they didn't do it, so I think we ought to do it. By the way, our 8% came in, I think, in 1998.
This is for ad hoc committee.
I believe it was the year.
Okay, any other questions, comments? Councilmember Resendez?
Really quick. I'm just concerned about how this is gonna affect, like, that gentleman that came over here and said he wants to build a Holiday Inn. I feel like if he came into our community on the incentive program and then he looked into or started exploring bringing another hotel here that's gonna help our businesses, I think we should show a good faith effort to honor that. So I might be confused about how this is gonna impact him, but I really hope that we can at least work with him to see that project go through because I think it's very important for our community. I don't wanna go back on our word.
So just, we're clear, it doesn't affect them. All it does is actually help them recoup some of their money.
They even get more.
But that being, but that being said, you know, we've tried this before. It didn't work. I think we have work to do before we're going out trying to tax, whether we believe it's our citizens or somebody else, more taxes. It's not something I care for, so I will not be part of this ad hoc committee, but Mr. Richmond...
We're not taxing our citizens, Mr. Mayor.
To, to avoid...
That's funny.
Wait, wait a minute.
Do you have a comment?
We're not taxing our citizens.
Oh, no, do you have, is that your comment?
That's my comment. You're inaccurately expressing that we're gonna tax our citizens and that's not true.
No, anybody stays at a hotel.
Our citizens don't stay at the hotel.
Okay, whatever.
Whatever, yeah, exactly.
So, now, this is again, an ad hoc committee. Mr. Richmond is passionate about this and to avoid a suspension of the rules again.
Thank you. It's very nice of you. But before you, before you make your motion, I'd like to make another comment. I would like to point out that the last time we tried to raise the T O T, we didn't, or no one, not a single person in this entire city even wrote an argument in favor of the tax. Now, I don't know anybody who ever gets a tax passed when not the people who even put the tax on the ballot, and I wasn't here then, didn't even write an argument saying, here's why we should put the tax on the ballot. I mean, if you leave a blank piece of paper in front of the voter and say, how about this tax? They look down and say, why are we doing this tax? And there's nothing there. Most of them are gonna vote no, okay? I, I mean, that's just a given. I don't know how that happened. I don't know how, how anybody ever put a tax on. I don't know why it can be passed. I think 88% of the hotel occupancy tax raises were passed last election and there were like 27 of them or something like that. 88% and we keep going zero. Well, if we never put an argument in for it, we'll always go zero. That's, that's my thing.
Okay.
Thank you for my, letting me express myself.
So, with the ad hoc committee, I will appoint councilmember Richmond and councilmember Spencer for this committee.
Yeah, we'll be the tax people.
You be the tax collectors.
That's right. I've been supposed to suspend the rules and suggest you be on, but that's okay.
Nope. All right. There's no other business? Your motion is to adjourn?
So moved.
Is there a second?
So second.
So goodbye.
So goodbye.
All in favor?
I missed it by half an hour.
Okay.
I said 10:30. It's 11.
Thank you.
11:05. I, not bad. If I kept my mouth shut, we could've made it 10:30.
No, I don't want you to keep your mouth shut.
8:30.
Nope. You're welcome.